Let's have a roll call.
Mary Kevicich.
Aye.
Mike Dimport.
Here.
Cheryl Poits.
Aye, here.
I am here. Put it all together.
Here.
Thank you. Don Ritter.
Here.
Eleanor Flip.
Here.
Hank Kirkoff.
Here.
She probably can't find a place to park.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I believe, you know, I'm just going to turn it over to you, Hank, because I know that you've probably got the agenda.
I do have it right here. So we'll start out with North High presenting student perspectives. Janice?
Okay. Good evening. So I'm very excited to share with you tonight some of our PE leaders, so if you guys want to come up. This is a program that is actually at North and at South, and I believe Ellie is a PE leader as well, so she can give you some inside information too. We have one of our teachers, our teacher at North, Lindsay Ginone, is in the back. And this is a program that we're very proud of because it allows our students to experience PE in a different way and also to help others. So I will let the students explain what they get out of it.
All right. So I'm Connor Thomas. I'm a senior at DGN. I'm a part of La Crosse, just joined speech team this year, a little, like, a couple other things, you know. But primarily, the reason that I joined the PE leader program was because of my experience freshman year. Freshman year, I was in the middle of an 18-month-long concussion, so obviously that meant that I wasn't able to participate in gym. But I still had to be signed up for the class because in Illinois you're required to take a gym class. So I had Ms. Ginone's wife as my teacher, which was awesome because she was super supportive and everything. But because you have 40 freshmen, you have to corral the entire time, having one kid off to the side, you can't focus all your attention on it. So my four leaders were super impactful in my life. They were there for me, like, every step of the way, even though it kind of sucked to have a concussion, they were there every day for me. And it was just nice to be able to have that experience of just support and just comfort from upperclassmen who, as a freshman, you're really scared of them. So having these super supportive people, as, like, they're really cool in your eyes, being there for you every day is something that really impacted me, like, deep down just throughout that experience, and then made me want to become like a light in other kids' lives, like they were for me. So I've just been blessed to be able to be a part of the program, to be able to try to step up into their roles that they were in. And so I want to be able to make an impact on some other kids' lives who might be going through tough times like I was. So, yeah, it's just a cool, positive experience to be able to have at North, so I joined. All right, Ellie.
Hi, I'm Ellie, and I'm a junior at North, and I'm a trainee right now, will be a leader next semester. I play badminton, and I'm involved in our North Stars program at North and the Peer Love Life program through the Downers Grove Township. So I'm going to tell everybody about the trainee class and how it's different from other PE classes at North. To start off, like, we have two different groups, so we have two different parts, the trainee program, and then you become a leader. First, we have to apply, and Ms. G goes through an application process and approves who she wants to be a leader in her class. And then from there, we have to go through two semesters of training, which involves us leading for the class and working really hard. And then from there, we become leaders for all the different gym teachers at North. So our trainee class is different from other classes at North because we're more involved in the class. We lead the class ourselves, and this teaches us how to lead for the different, for, like, the freshman PE classes or either even like the sophomore, junior, and senior classes as well. During the semester, we have a bunch of different units, like the normal PE class, but instead of Ms. G teaching the class the entire time, us as, like, the students, as the trainees, we lead the class. So at the beginning of each unit, for, say, basketball, we get together in the classroom and get a group, get in groups of two to three students, and plan, and plan, like, what the class layout is going to be. We plan a warm-up, and we plan the actual activity throughout the day, so we have the whole lesson plan filled out. And then when it comes to the actual day that we're leading, Ms. G usually starts it off by giving us information at the beginning of class about what's going on, what leadership opportunities we can leave, or like random quotes about leadership. And then she, while this is happening, the students who are leading that day, they are out in wherever we are for gym, outside, inside, setting up for class. And Ms. G will give us, like, the students, situations to do to the leaders, like, a kid could just go running off, or just give them a hard time, and, like, or if someone gets hurt, because there are all situations that could happen during a regular class, especially like the running off one, Ms. G said it actually happened once, and they had to, like, chase the person down, like, down the hallway. And so just for us to be ready for anything to happen as we're a leader, because we're the teacher's, like, second-hand person, we're there to help them with their class because, like Connor said, there's like 48 people, there can be 48 people in a class, which is really intimidating, but it's also really fun to help the students as well. And we don't always lead for the class. There are two units that we don't lead. We don't lead for the gymnastics unit or the swimming unit. So Ms. G teaches us how to deal with, like, different situations in those units and how, just a refresher, because we took that freshman year, and now I'm a junior, so it's always hard to remember what you're supposed to do, like, during those units, the difference, like, strokes and swimming and how to do them correctly. And Ms. G's biggest thing with our leader, like, the PE leader class is not only to become an amazing leader for the gym, for the PE program at North, but to be a leader outside of the school. So her biggest thing is, like, to lead by example, so I have to demonstrate what I want a student to do, like, working hard, and just being who I am, so that the student knows that it's okay to work hard in gym, because not everybody enjoys gym class, but if you're a leader with a positive attitude, then it could really make someone's day. And she gives us, like, leadership opportunities to help, like, throughout the school year, like, going to Feed My Starving Children, the Fish Food Pantry, and also, like, we've gone, we went on a leadership field trip during the semester as well.
Hi, I'm Margaret Malky. I'm a senior at North. I've been a leader for two semesters now, technically. I play volleyball. I'm an elite leader at North. I'm in Positively North and FCA. And I'm going to talk a little bit about what being an actual PE leader is like and all the responsibilities that we have. So like Ellie said, after you finish your two semesters of the trainee class, you become a leader. So I'm going to go over a little bit of what that daily routine looks like from, like, what I'm in right now. So I'm a leader for PE 1, which is our freshman, and so I'm also in first period, so it makes it a little challenging. So the first thing that we always have to do is we always check in with our teachers before we go to change for class, just so we can see the plan for the day and, like, we're on top of things. And as soon as we finish changing, we go and get the equipment for whatever we're doing for that day. So right now, I'm in the soccer unit for our freshman class. So as soon as we're done changing, we go as fast as we can. We go to the equipment room, and then we go out to the soccer fields, and we set everything up. And during this time, our freshmen will be running a couple laps just for their warm-up. So while we're setting up, they're doing that, and then as soon as they're done, they come over to the field, and we lead them in warm-ups. So like Ellie said, we're the ones that are leading by example, so we'll explain what the stretches that we're doing are, and then we'll do it with them, because Ms. G really likes to reinforce that our leaders are fully participating in the class, they're not, like, above the class, they're fully involved in the class. So then after our warm-ups, we will break out into whatever activity we're doing. So for me, we're doing soccer. So as leaders, we're fully participating, we're in the games, getting everyone involved in the games. And then after class, once our activity is finished, whatever we're doing, our job as leaders is to hustle over to wherever the equipment is, and we get everything back in place. And we, our job is to make sure that we never, ever leave a mess. Like, it's more important to us that, even if we're late to our next class, like, we stay and we clean up everything that needs to be cleaned up. We don't leave anything untouched. And after class, before we go to change, once again, we check in with our teachers, just because we always want to make sure there's nothing that's unfinished and we're set for the next day and everything that needs to happen. So that's our daily routine and daily responsibilities. And also, as PE leaders, we have a rental room, which is for students who forget their gym clothes. And so the PE leaders are in charge of that, and it switches off about every month. So there will be one leader that does before the class starts, and you go into the rental room, so you have to make sure that you get to class early enough so that you're there for when students need to rent their clothes. And you'll take their money and, like, put everything in the computer, just make sure everything's all set and organized. And then someone at the end of the period will do the same thing, but, like, giving everything back, collecting the money, you know, all that stuff. So those are our responsibilities. And we also, Ellie kind of touched this, but other responsibilities that we have is, we're big into service and volunteering. So for every semester that you're a leader, you have to do two hours of community service, which Ms. G will keep track of. And then we also have other opportunities, like, we go to Feed My Starving Children, and then as the trainee class, they go to the food pantry. And I just think it's really, everything that we're doing on the daily as our responsibilities can be impactful, like, it teaches us how to be a leader, not only in our PE classes, but in the whole school and also just in the community.
Hello, my name is Miles Teague. I'm currently a junior at Downers Grove North High School. People would tend to describe me as a very musical person, so naturally, I'm in a lot of musical ensembles at North, and I also perform, enjoy performing with the Chicago Youth Symphony Orchestra. I'm currently a second semester PE trainee, and will begin as a PE leader starting this upcoming semester. And I will be talking about how, what we learn in the PE trainee class and as a PE leader will help us in the future. So something that's truly incredible about this particular PE course is the fact that a lot of skills that we learn in the class can be applicable to everyday life, especially in the future. I feel like I've grown as both a leader and as a person in the short time that I've been taking this course. And one skill that I've really honed in on has been my confidence. You know, leaning at times can be pretty stressful, but I've learned to kind of wash away the butterflies and just being able to lead, even though I might be stressed out, have, being able to lead by example and have confidence in myself, something that I really feel like I've improved upon. And also just letting others know what I think and voicing my own opinion, that's, those are both things that I feel like I've really improved upon as a leader. And, yeah. So of course you're going to feel some sense of anxiety when you're having a job interview. This is something that can be applicable to later in life, but even though you could be stressed out about a job interview, you always want to portray yourself as being a very confident person, because that could have a very lasting impact as a first impression to a potential employer one day. Another trait that I would like to talk about that we touch on a lot in this class is accountability. And in the class, we are given opportunities at the end of each period to kind of critique what happened that day. So as Ellie mentioned earlier, we go through a rotation of different people leading the class every day, and the, at the end of the period, the class has the opportunity to give critiques. And I feel like these, having these open discussions really allows us to keep each other accountable to a very high standard of leading. And I think in life in general, like, as you go into the future and go into the working world, the people who always are the most successful are the people who hold themselves to the highest level of accountability, who always give 100%, no matter what the circumstances are. So having and learning to hold yourselves accountable in this class is something that's really helped me as well, not just in that class, but it will help me in the future, and it's also helped me just in my everyday life. And something else that's very important that we learned is just, just learning how to be a very helpful person and just be a helpful hand. As Connor alluded to earlier, you know, teachers could have up to 40 or 50 students in a PE class, so the leaders are kind of there to just help them out and make sure everything's going smoothly, and just being willing to lend a helpful hand goes a long way for the class and also applying that skill to a future job. And, like, if your boss asks you to do something, being willing to be that helping hand can really help out in the future. So I personally feel like I've, I've learned so much by taking this course that could help me in the future, and I also hope that any other student in the future that decides to join the program and take the course is able to learn and, learn from the experiences that are given to you in the class and, you know, be able to learn things that will help them in the future as well. So are there any questions from the board?
Do any of you have any designs to go into teaching?
I do.
I do too.
Is that why you joined the program? Is it one of the, one of your motivations for joining the program?
Personally, yeah, I would say yes. But also, oh, sorry. Yes, I'd say it was a motivation for me to join because I am considering teaching, but also, as I'm an athlete, and leadership is so critical when you are an athlete, like, because you just have to be that person that will set the example and do, do more when you're not even expected to do anything, I would say. And it, I just know, I've heard from so many people that the leader program is amazing, and it just gives you so many skills for life, and that was a big motivation for why I joined.
I think, I have, like, the same, like, opinion on that. I've always wanted to be a teacher. My mom's a teacher, and my sister's also, like, becoming a teacher. I've, going to, like, the leader program has helped me, like, find the urge, like, to want to be a teacher even more for, like, leading for the class and being in charge and making lesson plans, and just, like, getting inspiration from, like, Ms. G, let alone, because she's such an amazing teacher, that, like, it just wants you, like, to be a teacher even more.
I'd like to say, I'm sorry I'm late. Apologize for interrupting, but thank you for coming, and it was so inspiring and good to hear your story, so we really appreciate everything that you do and wish you the best in your...
It's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work. Being a PE leader and teacher is a lot of work, so good luck, and thank you for what you do.
It's worth it, though.
Yeah.
It's pretty rewarding for the, for the younger kids, and they look up to you, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving along, the next item on the agenda is the Student Board Member Questions and Comments. Eleanor, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Um, I just wanted to, like, there's so many things going on at North right now and always, but there are just a few that I wanted to highlight. So this past week was our homecoming week, and I just wanted to talk about how this week is, like, always one of my favorite weeks of the school year, because it's such a great way to celebrate, like, all the different activities and students at North and, like, have them receive acknowledgement for all the hours of hard work that they put in, especially at the assembly and things like that. I was having a conversation with one of my teachers the other day about how they always love homecoming week, because they're, at the assembly, they always see one kid who, in their class, who they didn't even know was involved in that, and then they're like, wow, that's like such a cool part of their identity that I didn't even know about, and then they're able to have that conversation the next day in class, or like, the next meeting class, and just talk about, talk about that with them and stuff like that. And then the next thing I wanted to talk about was how excited I am to be in one of the prototype classrooms this year. My English class is in one of those classrooms. I just wanted to talk about how, um, there's little details in the classroom, like the carpet and the paint and the lights and stuff like that, just that kind of create, like, a refreshing learning environment that I just have really appreciated and noticed. And I'm looking forward to the new furniture that I believe is coming to my classroom this month, so it's very exciting, because I think that student trial really is the, a really great way to gauge what is going to be successful in the future for North. And lastly, I know we're going to hear all about the master facility plan, but last week, we were able to hear about, we, the student design committee was able to hear about it, and I just was so impressed by the amount of flexibility that is going to be allowed with the learning commons, especially within the lunch and study hall type of classes and allotted time, because right now, sometimes if you're in your study hall and you go to one resource, but you really only needed 15 minutes of math help, you have to be in that resource for the whole time. But I think that giving the students the opportunity to jump from resource to resource and place to place, like, they can go and see their counselor for 10 minutes and then jump over to the English to read through a part of their paper, will make this, like, a study hall or a lunch period so much more functional and helpful for the student, like, overall, I think. And lastly, I know you just heard so much about the PE leader program, but I think the, one thing that makes this, makes this program so unique and effective in teaching students how to, and what I've noticed has, like, how it's made me improve so much, is that it really gives you the opportunity every single day to learn. There's so many leadership opportunities at North, but a lot of times, it's like a weekend there, or like, like, once a month, or once a week, or something like that, but being able to, I mean, you know the saying, practice makes perfect, like, being able to really go through the motions of leading a group of people every single day and getting to know the group of people you're leading, I think, has been the single most important thing in my leadership journey at North, so I just wanted to offer that. That's all I had to say. If there's any questions, then...
That's a great insight.
Yeah.
About how you use resource.
Yeah, for sure.
Because right now, as a, I mean, I didn't, I didn't think of that. I mean, as a student right now, you're, you're forced, if you need help in one or one thing, you're forced to choose which one. Now it can be both.
Yeah.
When we, when we get to where we want to be with this facility plan, so that's a, that's a...
I think that will make such a big difference.
Yeah, terrific.
Any other questions or comments for Eleanor? Kurt, did you have anything?
Yes, um, just to say, similar to what Ellie said, our homecoming week was two weeks ago. It was a big success, and I think a lot of people like it. On top of that, I am in one of the prototype classrooms, and while we haven't really seen much of it as it is right now, it's basically just a classroom with new paint and carpet. We anxiously await the, the updates that are coming to it. As you may have known and heard through the media, last Tuesday was National Voter Registration Day, and as the president of the Politics Club, I can tell you that our voter registration drive with the League of Women Voters was a big success. We got a lot of people registered to vote, and I am excited to vote myself this November. On top of that, tomorrow Congressman Roscom of the 6th District will be coming to talk with our AP Government students, and we will, we have many questions planned for him to ask about his policy positions on many issues. He represents the 6th District, which encompasses basically most of North High students and, like, probably like a quarter of South High students. And we also did extend a, an invitation to his Democratic challenger, but we have not heard anything back yet from, from that.
Interesting.
On top of that, last week Friday, we had the Master Facility Plan Student Meeting, which I had to be, which I was fortunate enough to be a part of. We went through a lot of the different plans, and I think that there's a lot of stuff that we can really work with in terms of not only making the school more accessible, but more useful for students in terms of the learning commons, in terms of making the school generally look more aesthetically pleasing, I think is generally something that we all headed, we all had ideas of. And generally, you know, in terms of our new auditorium, I think that that'll something that will really benefit the Fine Arts Program that I have, that I've happened to be a part of, and I think that that'll definitely be a big plus. And on top of that, just in general, being able to update the, the learning commons and parts of the school like that, I definitely feel that the parts of the school that, when you walk through South now, that even are newer, it starts with the music wing, and if you go up and you look at the math resource and the way that it's, it's much more functional, and I'm very excited to see how, as the blueprints of this sort of continue, we see a lot more functionality coming into the school, and we see that in the coming years. So thank you.
This is really great, because, you know, you have a different perspective than we do, because you use those spaces every day.
Yeah.
And in a few years, people coming in, they'll be used to it, so they won't be able to give us, you know, it would be great to get feedback.
Yeah, I'm very excited. I'm going to have to come back and visit, and sad that I won't continue.
I need to. Any other questions or comments? Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
We'll move on to the workshop, the Blended Consumer Education.
Here again to talk to you again. Tonight, we're going to talk about our, specifically our Blended Consumer Education course, but before we start that, I want to give us a little bit of context related to our facilities and how we're planning for trying to figure out what the new facilities give us opportunities for, for changing pedagogy when those facilities are completed. So what I've been doing with our different groups of teachers that have been looking for opportunities of innovation is I've been framing all of their work around our board goals and reminding them that Domain One, the student experience, is the one that is the most important to us and that these other domains are driving towards. As we get into speaking about blended, I just want to emphasize the point that our work within that realm is focused on two main things. One is how do we build stronger and more connections to our students? And then the other is how do we find opportunities for more targeted instruction for each of our students, all around the idea of personalizing learning for every student. Last year, we were curious about this idea of personalizing learning and what that means, and how we can start to take action and do some things within our buildings to help us to do that. And what we discovered through some research is there are three different avenues that we could take. One, in the green area, is about the partnerships involved in learning. Over on the, the blue area there is what we call deep learning, and that's about how do we give experiences to students in our classes that increase the depth at which they learn? But tonight, really, we're here to talk about the purple area there, which is flexible learning experiences. Our definition is flexible teaching options, which encourage anytime, anywhere learning, and student choice to demonstrate the understanding. So this year, we have assembled a team of teachers that are curious about this, and we're starting to explore what blended learning might mean for us. We're looking at other school districts, but we're also thinking forward, thinking about the facilities that we'll have in a few years, and how we could capitalize on that to make learning more personalized for our students. One thing I would like to emphasize, though, is when we talk about flexibility, we're talking about flexible time, flexible space. We're not talking about flexible curriculum and making courses that are within one model different curriculum than other courses. So I just want to assure you that flexibility in the curriculum is not something we're talking about here. So the Blended Explorers, as I said, is a group of educators that we meet throughout the year, and we're investigating this idea of blended, what does it mean to blend within our classrooms? So as we're getting modern spaces within our classrooms, how does that change the pedagogy? And then as we get opportunities, like our learning commons, what could we design to make things more personal for students, capitalizing on those learning commons there? So we've visited nearby school districts to look at what their blended learning models look like. We're immersed in ed research. Every time something new comes around, we bring that into our bucket and try to make sense of that within our lens. We are learning from our own students as they are going through some of these experiences, what they like, what they don't like, what's helping them. And then the other thing that we are here to talk to you about tonight is we already have a blended course in zero hour consumer education. Our two educators that are here to speak to us tonight are actually part of that Blended Explorers cohort, so their experiences are feeding into that group there. And their colleagues within that cohort are slowly dipping their toes into trying blended experiences with their students, and we're gathering that feedback, so at the end of the year, we can make some recommendations and, and start to get some of our teachers ready, so when the facilities are ready, the pedagogy is ready, and we can go off and running. So I'd like to introduce here Leanna Plaski and Kim Jablonsky, and Gina Zaccardi. Gina is going to talk to us a little bit about the history of why we established this course, and then they will talk about the course.
So I'm going to talk a little bit about why we focused on blended consumer education. As you already know, consumer education is a required course. There are a couple of courses outside of consumer ed that meet that requirement, but most students fulfill the graduation requirement via a consumer education course. It's a semester course, half a credit. And we really needed flexibility in that. As you know, many of our students are taking multiple classes, many of them overloaded in terms of beyond the seven periods that students have. We have May period day, but obviously with lunch. So we needed to create some flexibility for students. Several of our consumer education teachers, like Leanna, who taught it, who has taught it for years, were already... it for years, were already doing a substantial amount of instruction and providing a lot of resources online. So it seemed to be kind of a natural place to get started. And we had a number of students, and we still have some students, but a number of students taking outside consumer education class or course and then transferring it back to District 99. So they were going to take online courses and transferring that credit back in. So we started, oh, don't know what he said there, but let's try that again. Just to preview it, like the trailer. I was the trailer. Okay. So we really started these discussions, serious discussions, in 1516. And part of the reason why we became very serious about those discussions was we started to look at our data. How many students were actually transferring the credit back? One year, for example, in the 2012-2013 school year, we had 128 students taking consumer education outside of the district and transferred the credit back in. And we actually started to look at, why was this occurring? And what we continued to find were students who were taking a lot of, thank you, AP classes were basically booked each period and consumer education was a way that they could free up a little bit of space in, in their schedule. And so after looking at that data, talking to students and finding out about it, we started a planning year. And I was fortunate to work with two teachers. Leanna was one of them, who now teaches at both North and South, but was teaching consumer education, I believe, that year just at South, and a North teacher. And we did a planning phase, a planning year, to figure out what this would look like. And then we began implementation last year. We just had one class at each building and Leanna taught the course both at North and at South. And then we continued it this year. It was definitely success. We had approximately 50 students who I continue to say we brought back home for consumer education. And then we continued this year and Leanna's teaching it and Kim Jablonsky is teaching it. And we'll hear from them in just a minute. So the consumer education course, I think Rob already mentioned, is zero period. They meet a minimum of one day a week as an entire class, and that's on Tuesday. So the whole class is there. Students who need additional help, are not meeting expectations, or based on different projects, which you'll hear about, may meet more frequently. And of course, the coursework, you know, brings in discussions, online discussions, lessons, activities, assessments. As Rob said, the curriculum is the curriculum. The delivery is a little bit different, but the curriculum is the curriculum. It's not a change in the actual curriculum. So with that, I am going to turn it over to Leanna, who again was our first ever blended teacher in the district and taught consumer, blended consumer last year at both North and at South.
And I just want to give you a perspective of the in-class assignments versus the out-of-class assignments. All the coursework that I provided was the same that I provided in my traditional classroom even this year. The assignments were spaced out, so they still had things due every day, but it was up to them if they wanted to do it every day. And if an assignment took two to three days in my traditional class, I gave them that two to three days within that week to work on it. So I wasn't bombarding them with all this work and having these expectations that they maybe could not have met. Every Thursday, since we don't have discussion time in class, every Thursday I had a discussion board Thursday for them to answer one of my prompts that we were learning about. And then they would have to answer to other people without, throughout that week to keep the conversation going through class. And then like it was said, the consumer resources and curriculum are all the same, is the, all the same, but it's different delivery methods. And that's all out of the class. In class, I go beyond the why. Why are they learning this? Why is it important to them? What are the life skills that they need? We participate in activities to reinforce the material. We begin weekly work or unit assessment, depending on what's following for the next week. And then I always explain the next week's lessons and assignments to discuss any questions that they might have. And all the unit assessments are given at the end of each unit and are exactly the same as the traditional classroom. Here's an example of a sample unit for budgeting. So out of class, they would do a comprehending consumer. That's a packet where they look through the textbook and they get the ideas of what's coming up and what they need to learn. And then they would watch some budgeting Youtubes and answer questions. Those Youtubes would help them write out the financial sheets, fixed and flexible expenses and cash inflows and outflows. Again, they have their discussion board Thursday that they'd have to do in the Google Groups and then answer that. Then when they come into class, we would discuss the why, why they learned about the budgeting, about the financial sheets, everything they just learned about. We do, we do a budgeting, a bean budgeting game to reinforce the activity. And then the final assessment, we would begin that, which is a project-based budget assessment. And then I explain next week's assessments or assignments and discussion questions.
So as I took over at North this year, I was fortunate enough to be able to pick Leanna's brain after having gone through it on both campuses last year and model a lot of the same things that she had done the year before. Visually, for me, I'm a little bit of a visual person in terms of organization. And so I decided to just show you a couple of images of what a student might see week to week in my class. I kind of house all our information in one weekly document that students access. It helps them keep a similar format of what processes they're going through. Likewise, it kind of helps me organize my thoughts to make sure they're going through different levels of thinking throughout each week. So they go through different sections on some engaging type of activity, like an article or a video. They explore where they're really kind of learning the new material, apply through some different types of activities, some type of assessment, whether it's part of a summative assessment that they're working on or a formative check for me that I can take a look at and see how are they doing on these skills? And then kind of preview what the in-class day will look like for them the following week. So a sample week for me, and I chose this one just because it's a little bit outside the norm of what a typical week would look like. Most of my weeks look just like what Leanna had talked about. As we were doing resumes and interviewing, and I was really thinking about what would be the best use of time in this model that I have for students. And so the out-of-class assignments for that week looked exactly the same as what we did in class. As Gina said, the delivery of the information might have been a little bit different, the way that I pulled information back from students might have been a little bit different. But they really went through looking at different sample resumes, resume guidelines, prepping for different interviewing strategies of how to answer behavioral questions, discussion questions on the Google Groups, just like Leanna. And then they had some practice on answering an interview question. Because the unit assessments were a final resume and a mock interview, in terms of the in-class assignment for that week, instead of meeting with all students at one time on Tuesday, I gave students the opportunity to sign up for a time slot across Tuesday through Friday, where I could meet individually with each student to complete the mock interview. That gave me a better opportunity to assess them, get to know them and maintain those relationships that can be a little bit more challenging when you're not seeing them every day. And then also give them individual feedback that hopefully will be really beneficial to them. Throughout this process, we know that we don't have it perfect yet. Just like anything in our traditional classroom, we're continually evaluating and trying to make it better. This feedback that you see here is a combination of feedback from the South course last year and the North course that's, was probably at about week six when we got this feedback right now. And you can see that time management is a huge theme in terms of what this class is all about for them and those executive functioning skills. Leanna, I don't know if you want to?
Yeah, that was the same at South, that I found that the top things were organization, responsibility, accountability, time management. These are all the things that they got from the course when it was the ending of the course. I had asked them, they also had said about working at their own pace and having lenient due dates. And in the beginning, first semester, I had decided to ask the students, do you want assignments due every day? Turn them in and then I can grade them for you? Or do you want it done at the end of the week? And they all said they wanted it due daily. And then after about a week, week and a half, they were saying, can we have it due on Monday and Tuesday because of that flexibility? So I just had to learn to be really flexible with them and meet their needs. And I was fine with it because I was honest with them. I said, I've never done this before. We're learning together. And it was such a great process that I could change so much for when I taught it at North second semester. So first semester really helped me out with everything that I needed. Again, with the time management, that's a huge opportunity for the students. And another takeaway, I think for me, like I was just saying, it was the flexibility of being able to meet their needs and meet it in a way where they would achieve what they needed to achieve their goals. And I've learned now to take that into my other classes. I mean, I've always been flexible, but really to focus on the students' needs and what they need and just bringing that time management into my other courses, since it is such an important thing for them to learn.
Yeah, and I would add just that, you know, the feedback that they had on their positive end, they love the flexible timeframes that force them to work on time management skills. On the flip side, the things that they struggled with are time management and procrastination potentially. And so that's something, for me as the first time through, that we're working on every week. I'm going to see them bright and early tomorrow morning and we're going to talk about what's working and what's not and what type of information I need in a timely fashion to help them and what information in their documents each week really is completely at their own pace. So I'm excited to, you know, continue to be able to personalize that learning environment for them. And like Leanna said, it's really forcing me to think even more about how do I structure things in my traditional classroom? Because there are certain things that have worked better in the traditional classroom this semester. I'm teaching both right now. Margaret, who presented to you earlier today, could vouch for the fact that they are probably the same. But some things are working better in the traditional classroom, some things are working better in the blended classroom. And I have to look at both of those and see how I can modify each of the environments to meet the needs of students.
So our, our consumer ed course exists in zero period right now. Our curiosity is how do we take the experience of that and the knowledge that our two educators have and how do we bring that into our, our school day? One of the challenges that we have is space. We don't have space in our buildings right now for students to experience a full model like we have for consumer ed. So we're working with the Blended Explorers this year to find out how can we do blended within our classroom walls and periodically coordinate with our libraries to, to make sure that we fine tune this thing, all in anticipation of when the facilities are ready that we'll have a cohort of teachers that are ready to then go out and try it and train the rest of our teachers. So that's what we have. What questions do you have?
Zero period, is that before the day starts?
Yes.
Okay, so the in-class portion is before the school day?
Yes.
Okay. So you're talking about potentially involving this on a larger scale. And so the thought and idea is that students can take more classes than seven classes a semester? What, what's, what's the goal here?
The thought and idea, the goal is that as we look at targeting instruction, for example, Kim gave an example of doing the interviews with students. And so if we were to bring that model into our school day, the educator would be doing the interview with one student and have learning tasks for the other students to do. The idea is that if the students don't need the teacher at that moment during that time, do they have the option to go to the Learning Commons or the library and work in their own small groups, flexing that space of where they choose to do their work? The same thing they also alluded to, which is the time. Can we open, open up a little more ownership for the students of give them deadlines and let them know their teacher is there as a resource, but let them flex their time throughout the day? So for example, if they're somewhere else in the building and they know that their deadline for something in that course is a week from now, but there's a looming deadline for another course tomorrow, do we have opportunities that we can say, yes, work on that thing that's due tomorrow because that's your stressor right now? But no, it's not about taking more classes. It's not about adding more students into a single class.
So potentially having kids in the school who are not specifically assigned to a classroom at a certain period, they're just somewhere in the building.
That's what we have to make sense of. How do we?
And if I've got three of those classes on a day, I could potentially have three periods where I don't have to be in a classroom and I just have flexed time during those three periods.
Yeah, there are some schools that have models like that. And there's a lot of pieces we need to figure out in terms of attendance and how do we account for students?
Yeah.
That's, that's what we're trying to process this year is what's a model that fits their needs, but makes sense to us also.
So I have a, I have a college freshman and she, all of her classes are blended. And even if she has to go to school, some of, some of her classes, she has to go three times a week. But it's still all blended. And I think this is great because I've taken a blended course, I found it very difficult to take because you really have to be disciplined to do it. It was much easier to watch TV than to take a course. I'm serious. And I think if this is the way teaching is in higher education and it does put more requirements on the student to, you know, manage their time and manage their expectations, it's, it's not an easy thing to do. So I, I think this is, this is going to be great.
Yeah, I, college is a different scenario, though. College, I can go back to my dorm. High school, I'm on the campus, so we're responsible for the kids during the time that they're flexed. So it's just, there's some challenges, I'm sure.
Yeah.
But that was my key.
Blended doesn't always mean you leave the room, though.
Exactly.
Okay. You could have blended going on where you're working with a small group of three kids that need a lot of help on something right now, or you're extending something with them. And the other kids are working at their own pace on whatever it is because they can be doing that. And then you can pull in and push out kids as you need to. That's a version of blending, just within the, the idea of blended is you're offloading some of the work to the students, they're owning some of that while you're working with the kids you need to absolutely work with at that, that period in time. Like Kim could do what she's doing now. Kids can be working, right? Okay.
It was a lot more chaotic in my traditional classroom than it was in the blended classroom. So I did, it took five days instead of four days because you have to pull chairs out into the hall and get them set up and then be out. And, and my students were awesome. I don't know if every class I would have had over all 15 years of teaching would have done as well. But my traditional class that I have right now was great and they moved along the activities. But I would say it was more stressful for me. I think it was more stressful and awkward for them. We were sitting in the hallway doing the mock interview while the other students were sitting in the classroom. So I was actually able to spend more time with the students in my blended class and have it be more seamless transitions between and have more time to write feedback than I did in my traditional room. And I think, you know, they do have different freedoms throughout the day as it is now in terms of, you know, we just talked about the positives of them having a little bit more freedom to go to math for 15 minutes and then to English to get some help. And so this potentially, if they had one blended class in their schedule, maybe would open up another period of the day for them to be able to flex their time a little bit. Maybe their science teacher is free that period and isn't free their lunch or study period. So I think that they, I'm amazed at how awake and responsible they are. I think sometimes we underestimate them a little bit and they, you know, if we set the expectations high, they often live up to them.
So, so is the goal that they should be somewhere doing something? Or is it?
I mean, yes, they don't necessarily have to be doing it on my class. I would guarantee you, almost none of them are working at seven in the morning during zero hour. And Wednesday, Thursday, Friday on consumer ed, they're kind of flexing their time outside the day. If it was during the day, you know, I think their schedule is flex and, and sometimes they have three tests and other classes during, on a certain day. And so maybe they would procrastinate that week or I would say prioritize, right? And decide when to do that work. And it might all happen outside of the school day for my class because they may choose to spend that period working. I don't, I don't know that we have any answers for anything on what it looks like and who it's right for, but I'm excited about the different possibilities I've seen at different districts.
Do you think that it's more geared towards the upperclassmen, the juniors and seniors? Because, you know, the freshmen and sophomores have not tasted that freedom, let's say. And they may not understand it.
I think it depends on the student. I'll tell you, I have one sophomore and almost all the rest seniors. And the sophomore is the first one to email me every week when my link doesn't work or she can't find. And, you know, so it works for her, whether globally, across the board. I think it's less about what their academic standing is and more about what those executive functioning skills are. I think that's their maturity level, self-motivation, time management. I think you could find it anywhere, but you're going to find seniors who can't do it and you're going to find freshmen and sophomores who can.
I have a quick question. As I, I know that, just stop me if I'm wrong. You were talking about how this class was originally created to help students who particularly pack schedules in terms of like APs, et cetera. So I happen to be taking five AP classes and happen to be taking consumer ed at the time. taking Consumer Ed at the time. And it's not just time management, but there's also been a concern that I've heard from people where they talk about the possibility of taking these classes pass/fail because the fact of having something that's unweighted among all of your weighted classes tends to be sort of a damper on your GPA. Has there ever been any thought into further development of Consumer Ed and blended consumer of turning the class into a possible pass/fail class for those taking more weighted classes?
It is true that when we surveyed students, so in those years that we had 93 one year, 128 the next, like 120 year or two after, that that was one of the issues. One of the issues that students said was, you know, I'm in all AP and honors classes, if I take the course outside, I can transfer the credit back in as a pass/fail, it doesn't impact my GPA. That is true. And we did talk about it, and we decided not to go that route. We wanted the class to model our, during the day, regular Consumer Ed course. But it was something, yes, we discussed.
Why wasn't that discussed for like, just even during the day, Consumer Ed, though? Like, if you just took it as a class, why wasn't, why?
Oh, Consumer Ed in general?
Why isn't Consumer Ed in general, on top of blended consumer, just not pass/fail?
We only have a couple of courses that we offer for pass/fail, and there's certain criteria that typically has had to, you have to meet to pass the, or to have a pass/fail option, and Consumer Ed doesn't set that criteria, doesn't meet that criteria. But we did talk about it specifically with blended, because when we interviewed students, we found that that was an issue. But we also knew that with offering one section each building, 120 students were not going to enroll.
Yeah.
And that wasn't what we heard from every student, but you're right, we did hear that from some.
This is a bigger issue, too.
It is a much larger issue.
The goal in the class is to learn, right? And when it becomes more about, you know, looking at the grade point average, that's an issue, I think. So I think that's another factor in this discussion.
And with the blended consumer, just to reiterate, it was a very targeted, in my opinion, intervention, right? We had a targeted reason. There was a perceived problem, and this was a potential solution for some students. It's very different than what Dr. Lang is talking about in the sense that we're talking about a more global blended experience. Are we learning for our blended consumer? Absolutely. And we're very fortunate that we've had this experience, as I think it will help.
Well, we heard that in your presentation, that this is informing how you teach your traditional classes as well, helping to improve that. So, I mean, that's a great, I don't know that that was something we expected, maybe it was, but it's certainly a good outcome, right? And I shared some of your insights here, too, Nancy. You know, it hit me the same way. I have a freshman and a junior.
I do.
Hey, learning to be more accountable for your own education is certainly something good. And I do know the majority of the kids taking this are, tend to be more the juniors and seniors. And it makes sense, I think, from a consumer education standpoint, that it's, you know, that that education occurs closer to the point at which it really becomes more applicable, right? But I think that that's, you know, it's a good prep for college because you do need to be a little more responsible for your education.
Be a lot more responsible.
Yeah.
I do have one question, though, Rob. You made a comment about, we didn't, something about the space. And is it because we need to account for where the students are? I can't remember exactly what you said.
Yeah, so as Hank was saying, two different ways you can think about blended. One is within your four classroom walls, and we absolutely have space for that because the students are in those classes. It's when we start to think about what does this mean, flexing the space outside during that class period. We have space in our libraries, but many times students that are in lunch will opt to go into the libraries. So we don't have the capacity on a large scale to have students selecting to go to the library for that class instead and for the teacher. With Blended Explorers, what we did say is this year, they're going to coordinate in the springtime for one unit, they're going to coordinate closely with the libraries and reserve space in there, where a librarian can do the supervision during that period. And then it's creating a partnership between that teacher and the librarian, so that way they can learn from that. So potentially, when there's a Learning Commons, we can see what does this mean. The other thing, as part of the Blended Explorers, is our administrators in the buildings that are in charge of attendance and tardies and all of that, they're in that group with us, exploring, because they're trying to wrap their heads around what does this mean for us potentially down the line. So as we go and visit other schools, they're coming with us and they're looking at it through that lens of how does this impact our attendance procedures and things like that.
I have a quick question. So is the long-term goal of this to have, like, other courses become blended, or not really?
The long-term goal is to offer this as an option for the teacher and the students. There are some schools that create a very, they create a system in which during the registration process, a student selects, I want to take this course in a blended format, or I want to take this course in a traditional format. There are other school districts that don't do that and say blended is another tool that a teacher can choose to use if the students are ready for it. So part of our exploration this year is to decide which of those models or a mixture of those models is best for us in the district.
You're seeing this, I think she was asking, you're seeing this for more than just Consumer Ed?
Oh, yeah.
You're seeing this for many other?
Yes.
And with other classes, because like, Consumer Ed, I think it's manageable to have it meet maybe one time a week, like mandatory, you must be there for the whole class period. But like, are other courses, like, at other schools or districts, are they, like, meeting more than once a week, and then only like, maybe two days in the week or three days in the week are for flex?
Yeah. What we found is that typically the school district sets a minimum number of days that the students have to meet in-class face-to-face, and then it's up to the teacher based on those students and the unit of instruction for them to give the students at least a one week's notice to say, you know, next week, this group of students within our class, you don't have to come Tuesday or Thursday, or something like that. So it's very flexible throughout the year for the teacher and the students.
Awesome.
I think we focused our questions on what the students are doing during flexible, I'm going right here. I moved it over. But what about the teachers? What are they doing? If we move this from zero period to the daytime and, you know, the students, teachers are meeting just one day a week, what are the teachers doing during that other two days that they'd otherwise be meeting?
So one of the districts that we went to, we were able to observe what happens on those blended days. The teacher still goes to that classroom that the teacher is assigned to, because if the students are using that as a flex blended day, they still need to know where their resource is at if they need resource at that time. Other school districts, they take more of a stance that says this is about targeted instruction, so the teacher should always be with a group of students, instructing a group of students within that assigned space.
So meaning that one classroom, you know, maybe five students are meeting on a Monday, and then the next five are on a different day?
Exactly, yeah. Let the teacher decide which groups of students need instruction on that day, direct instruction, and then which students in that class can do their learning tasks in a digital way.
Okay.
So I am there every morning, except for Mondays because that doesn't really work well with the zero hour and late start. But otherwise, I'm there every morning for any student who wants to come in. I strongly recommend and call home and email if I have a student dropping below a C level in the class, that they come in to meet with me every day until we can get back up to a point where they're, you know, meeting mostly expectations in the class. Right now, I only have one or two where we've had meetings like that. I think as the semester progresses and the way the content of Consumer Ed goes, I don't think I'll have more students below a C level, but I think I will have more students who come in to get assistance on different things. Got a lot of emails this week about 1040 EZs and how to correctly fill that out. So I anticipate seeing a few more of them over the next week or two.
They could have a side job, you could start helping.
Yeah. Yes.
And I follow the same thing that she did. I would have the students, as soon as they were hitting below C, I was contacting parents and counselors and talking with the students and bringing them in more frequently.
Well, my questions, I hope, don't come off as being overly skeptical. In fact, I would say, I absolutely love the fact that you guys are exploring this and pushing the boundaries of traditional learning. I think it's fantastic. And going and viewing other school districts and seeing their models and trying to test what works and what doesn't, I think is wonderful. I really do. It's a service to our students. Thank you.
Yeah, we're taking our time trying to do it systematically to make sense of it.
But I think you raise a really good point, and that is how, as we roll this out and expand it, we have to make sure that parents understand. They understand what's happening for their students' day, and that they understand that the teacher's not just, you know.
Yeah. All the questions I asked, I'm sure would be what a parent would ask. Is my kid just sitting around in school doing nothing? What are the teachers doing when they're not teaching? Those are questions that would definitely come up.
Absolutely.
We have a parent contract for them to sign so that they understand what the format of the class is and how it works. So it's not just, you know, there's no parent involvement at all. They have to sign a contract agreeing to it.
Like Nancy said, it's, you're moving more close to a college schedule. And the more opportunity that kids get to have an introduction to that kind of model, the more prepared they are when they go off to college.
It's an exciting time.
It is.
I mean, with this in our master facilities plan, and it's causing us to look at everything we're doing and how we're doing it. And I love the examination, so I echo what Don's saying here. It's exciting.
And I'll just add, Don mentioned when they go off to college, it's pretty much if they go off to do anything, there is an accountability piece.
Right.
Sure.
That is extremely important.
Yep.
So I agree. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the master facility plan.
Are we going to be able to do this on budget?
Hey, Jim, I was going to, busy.
Bring the house lights down. I'm not about to sing, just so you know. No, maybe a little, no.
What you singing for us today?
So this is a moment that we've been building for, for quite a while on the district. Tonight, I'll let Amy and Steve introduce themselves in a second, but I'm joined by representatives from White, our architectural firm. We're going to go through the preliminary designs as they stand, what we've been working for, for a long time, to get here, but in earnest since the passage of the referendum. So I'm going to play the part of setting up the architects and give you kind of some overall ideas, and then I'm going to get out of the way when we focus in on each building specifically. We'll start with South and then move to North. The principals are going to join us when their specific building is being discussed because they're leading a lot of this work, as you can imagine, within the schools. And as we go along throughout the presentation, please do not hold your questions, okay? If you have a question, if you want something explained, just jump out and ask it because it's a lot, we've found from doing a lot of these with the design teams, in the moment, it's a lot easier. The image is up on the screen and everything's ready to go right there, so just ask it, okay? So don't hold back, okay? So, I don't have a clicker. Tony, you can just advance for me if you want. Oh, we got a clicker over here. Next slide, please. Oh, preview there, too.
Previews.
All right. There we go. Thank you. So just to review, the commitments that we've been making to the community for the last couple of years centered around these kind of concepts, which you've heard from me hundreds of times over the last several years. So safety, security, accessibility, air conditioning check, that one's done. The idea of modern learning spaces and Learning Commons, which play into a lot of the conversations you've already heard this evening, and then parity across campuses. When we talk about parity across campuses, obviously that means at North High, looking at the cafeteria and gymnasium space, at South High, looking at outdoor PE space and additional turf field and the auditorium. Man, it's got a sticky trigger finger here. All right. Did I get far enough back? Nope, there we go. So just things that we've hit along the way here, just to review everything that we've done kind of since the referendum passed. Obviously, the air conditioning and security upgrades over the summer at both schools, the prototype classrooms you heard about from our student board members this evening. We've had many design team meetings with staff. We have over 200 staff members involved in all the different areas of the design teams, you'll see those in a second. We've gone on building tours of both New Trier, Naperville Central, and the principals have gone out on their own and administrative teams to other, a variety of other schools, and so have I. We have the neighborhood meeting for our neighbors that would be most closely impacted by any of these changes. Then we've had our community team meetings with our community oversight group that makes sure that we're meeting the terms of the referendum, that we, the commitments we made to the community, and student oversight committee as well, that are taking a look and making sure the adults are doing things right by students. We've worked through some preliminary budgeting to make sure that everything that we're talking about fits within our budget, and we're in the process of construction management interviews. Here's the variety of different design teams that we have with representatives across the district. We started as district teams so that we looked at these spaces with kind of a common understanding of what would happen in each of them. And now we're at the point where we're breaking out at the building level so that we can focus in on building specific needs that fit within those larger visions of each of those spaces. As I mentioned, we also have student groups at each school that are looking over what the adults do, as well as the community group. All right, so that's everything that leads up to here with the preliminary design concepts. I'm going to turn, I'll let Amy and Steve introduce themselves.
My name is Amy Fuller. I am a graduate of South, actually, and also a community member over on the north side of town now. I am one of the lead architect on the job. And I'm here with Steve Shear, who will introduce himself momentarily. We started off these conversations early on and came up with a few kind of key words that have still today carried through and carried through the design process. Encouraging community, creating a sense of community for each of the schools to have, promote connections within the schools, accommodate flexibility and agility, develop a sense of transparency, create openness. And you'll see that later on in the plans when we talk about Learning Commons and what that means for teaching and learning. And foster choice and independence. We heard a lot earlier today about that choice and independence and what that means in preparing students for the future.
All right. So at the last board meeting, you saw this, which is the overall site plan in the areas that are being impacted as a result of this, the outside edge of the building. But what we're going to do tonight is start to go inside the walls and look at where the changes are going to occur. So for review, South, this is a current floor plan. The, I think we decided that is salmon or pink, I don't know. That pinkish colors are the existing hallways. What you'll notice about South, this is the boxy but good design, okay? So really, the theme that's running through South currently is a lot of square edges, hard corners, right? A very industrial type of design. And what we're looking to do is to soften that look, make it feel more community and more aesthetically pleasing, as Kirk said earlier. So here's the change that occurs with the new floor plan. What you're going to see, just to orientate yourself around the building a little bit, I'm going to grab my microphone, this is where you get the solo act. So this is the current student, new, or the current student entrance, main entrance, right here, right? Bus drop off is here. These get reversed. That's why this has now proposed main entry, and this is where your security vestibule is. Highlights on the first floor include that security vestibule, meeting room, which South doesn't have, like the alumni room at North. Actually, both buildings need a lot more meeting spaces, especially as we talk about things like blended learning. Where do those small group of kids go to work? We don't have a lot of those spaces in either building. New administrative suite, which takes all of the disparate offices that are scattered around South and pull them together in the front of the building. The new Learning Commons, moving around the Commons here, which goes around the courtyard. You have the new auditorium. As we wrap back- As we wrap back around, you end up into a brand-new entire fine arts wing here with the new two culinary arts labs. Slight remodel of photography to get some offices in here, some new classrooms that are where there's some offices currently. And we pull back around to the front of the building here with a renewed learning resource center and technology support area. Amy and Steve are going to dive in, deep into the drawings. I'm just kind of giving you the quick overview and, and idea. What you'll notice here, lots softer feel inside of the building, a lot more accessible when you're in that commons, as Kirk talked about when he's there, or maybe it was Ali that talked about this, during a lunch period where you can freely get around to everything that's in the building, right? Yes?
Do we lose any classrooms or office space?
We don't lose any. We gain up to four.
I'm verifying now, I think we may have plus two.
Okay.
Okay.
So plus two, yeah. And we gain a, we consolidate a bunch of office space. I think we gained two offices potentially, if we, we have enough room for future growth of two offices.
And the office sizes are a little bit bigger or not?
Just slightly. Not a lot bigger, but yes, bigger.
Big enough where you could actually hold a meeting in them?
Yeah, because I know for your assistant principals, you don't really have that kind of space.
You won't have to walk through one to get to another.
Right, yeah.
Correct.
And there will, there will be more adjacent conference room space, which we don't have right now either.
Okay.
And you're going to see that when we dig into that administrative suite, yeah.
So this is when we come into the building where the security is today at the front of the building.
So this entrance is in line with the cafeteria entrance, will become the new main entrance.
Okay.
Right? And then student drop off will be in a, it'll actually be in Ed's office is where it ends up. So where Ed's office currently is becomes the new student entrance.
Entrance.
Yes.
Okay.
Because it lines up, we want to try to line those up with hallways.
And that'll be locked during the day, correct?
Correct.
So that it's just the main entrance.
Absolutely, yeah. All visitors coming in through the day, there's a security vestibule here and a new one because the auditorium comes out further than it does now. We turn the entrance over here on the side, and this becomes the new west events entrance with.
Oh, well, there's security there. I'm sorry.
Yeah, there'll be a secure vestibule there as well.
And you're moving the, the memorial garden?
The memorial, yeah. We have a whole bunch of landscaping at both schools that we have to do, but we haven't, we've accounted for it, but haven't had any discussion of landscaping yet.
Okay.
Yeah, but yes.
The Mustang?
Yeah, and the Mustang. We'll have to go somewhere.
[laughing]
All I heard was that Ed didn't want it in his office, that's all.
The Mustang?
I've got lots of them, huh?
So that's kind of the first floor view. I'm going to jump through South's kind of feel as we move through the floors, but the majority of the massive changes occur on the first floor at South. As we move up to the second floor, you'll see a key feature that happens at South is that along this glass wall that faces the courtyard is a stairway that goes up to the, the second floor. At the corner of this stairwell, and then there's a traditional stairwell that happens over in this corner, there's these study lofts, which are, you'll see what these kind of look like as they dig in, but more small kind of group areas where students can gather and work, both up the stairwell and at the top of each stairwell. Right now, oh, you can see second floor of the auditorium with some storage. They'll dig into that in a second. And then you'll see right now, we have, we're hoping to add an, an additional second floor here at South. This is sitting slightly outside of the budget, but we believe that through our bidding process and everything that we're about to do, that we'll be able to pull that budget into scope and be able to, and with our contingencies, be able to accomplish this goal of the, the second floor. This is our number one, you know, you set priorities of what fits within the budget and what doesn't. This is slightly outside of budget, but we believe that within the first year, we'll be able to make some good purchasing and pull this back inside of it. And then we have a couple alternates at each school that, that Steve and Amy will talk about as well. So although this is a little out, we believe that very quickly within the first year here, we'll be able to pull this back in and add this second floor. This gives South, we have always talked about additional science labs at North, but South could use those. So this would add two modern science labs here at, at South, as well as two additional classrooms. But they'll dig into this space and explain how this works in a second. Going up to the third floor, you have more auditorium up on the third floor and then additional study lofts. There's a slight remodel and special services to get us some office space, but other than that, it's really the lofts that happen up on the third floor. So I'm going to turn this over.
Steve? Good evening. I'm, I'm Steve Shear with White and Company, and if there's one thing Amy and I learned throughout the process is to first introduce ourselves as graduates of your district, and second, as designers and architects for you. So we're going to drill in, as Dr. Thiele said, about some of the specific spaces. So what you're looking at now is sort of a zoomed-in view, if you will, of the main administration. So this is the, the south side of the building. Your main entrance is currently just off the screen. Mr. Schwartz's office is right about here, and the cafeteria is off to the left there. So in this remodel, we're actually proposing switching the student entrance and the visitor entrance. So your main visitors will come in through that door right there, and the student entrance, which will be locked, will be located there. One of the main goals here was to get all the student support services and administration in one central location. Currently at South High, they're sort of dispersed throughout the school. That creates some inefficiency for the staff and even tougher access for the students. So locating all those functions in one centralized location, it does a number of things. It kind of allows for sharing of resources. So we, in the center area here, we've sort of identified sort of these clusters of conference rooms. Those are rooms that can be shared between the deans, the counselors, the administration, not necessarily owned by any one department. Likewise, we tried to do that the same with sort of workstation areas, you know, places for copying office supplies that they could be centralized and shared between the staff. The other thing it does, it makes better access for the students to these resources. So if you notice along the top of the screen, that's where we have the waiting and reception areas, which is directly adjacent to the commons. So when students need resources, they're coming into these two areas, which are, which is flanked with the college and career center in the middle. And the thinking was that as students need resources, they're coming into these reception areas, and you don't necessarily know who they're visiting. They could be having a meeting, a scheduling meeting with a counselor. They could be meeting a dean, meeting with a nurse, a social worker. But the idea is they come in directly from the, the commons, and then they meet with who they need to beyond that. Couple of other features, as we located the, the health center near the main entry. What we learned throughout the conversations is having that close to the front door helps with visitors who are coming in often frequently, or frequently visiting the, the health center. Also, ideally located in the case of emergencies and EMT need to come in and meet the, the health center. And then opposite the main entry is that community room function, another meeting room that could be used by the staff, it could be used by the community, and also locating our security functions right by the main entrance. So we have, the office is numbered. Mr. Schwartz is working with the staff in terms of who actually goes who, but we just want to make sure that the organization of spaces is there right now. Any questions or comments on the admin?
There are restrooms in that space?
Yeah, so along these common areas are two single-user restrooms for the staff as well.
As well as on the nurses' office.
Right, and a dedicated one in the nurses' center, office.
Student entrance have some sort of an exterior canopy as well, do you think?
I think so. So we're going to look at sort of a new canopy for the visitor's entry, because one of the security issues we learned was not really being able to identify what the front door of the school is. So with the new entrance, we're going to look at a new canopy here. There is an existing canopy over here that does stretch there, so we'll have to look at how that could connect, how that could be redone or fixed up.
So I'm, I'm sorry. You said that, so the, the waiting reception area is on the top of the area, so the main office reception is on the lower left?
Yeah, so the one that we thought students would be accessing more located directly adjacent to the commons. The third one, thank you for pointing that, is the main office reception, which is directly adjacent to the secured vestibule where visitors are coming in.
So if students come into the, the ones adjacent to the main commons, how will people know they're there?
What's the question?
How will people know that they're in the reception area?
There are going to be reception and staff located in these locations, too.
Okay, there will be reception.
Each, each one will have separate areas. Counselors might be closer to one waiting area, deans in attendance to another, the nurses' office in that area, support staff, secretarial staff.
There'll be people there, okay.
And then a reception towards the front entry for your visitors to the school.
Right.
Okay, we're going to move on. We're going to swing towards the, the auditorium, and this is actually being kind of replaced in the current footprint of the auditorium. And one thing that really drove the, sort of the shaping and the size of the auditorium is the target seat number of getting 1,200 seats in here, but also the fact that we have an existing school around three sides of this building. So that really kind of drove the footprint and the shaping of the audience seating, and we worked with theater consultants to make sure that the number of seats are there and the appropriate sightlines are in place.
How many seats today is there?
About 150.
Right. So the, the way it's kind of shaping out with the, the seating is that there's really three main areas of seating. So you'll enter the auditorium from the commons, and there's sort of the main level seating, also known as orchestra seating, but that's sort of the main floor that'll slope down to the stage. And then behind that cross aisle is, is the parterre seating, and that's a fancy theater term for basically the seating underneath the balcony, which houses another 400, and then above that would be the balcony seating. So what's different about this footprint and layout from the current auditorium is that you'll have access to the auditorium from all three floors of the building. And if, if you can imagine kind of walking down this cross aisle, you actually walk up these back rows of seats, and you could exit out the second floor of the building. Some of the other kind of features are a stage size that we worked with the theater staff on. I think what was key to them is getting sort of the side stage space, and then we just met with them last week on the back of house functions, but getting appropriate scene shop that has access from the outside for loading, and that a direct shot into the stage for loading props and scenery onto the, onto the, onto the stage. And then what we learned is that there's a, there's a need for gathering space for, for students who are in productions and performances. So getting ample-sized dressing rooms along the south here for students to prepare for productions, and then much-needed toilet rooms that we'll maintain. Those are for the large events in the athletics area. We're also squeezing in some additional bathrooms and restrooms that would serve the commons, but also serve large functions in the auditorium. And then the other feature is this, this studio theater, and that's going to house sort of most of, most of the, the drama productions. It's designed to be a highly flexible space where they could do different arrangements of chairs and risers for different productions in there as well. Dr. Thiele mentioned possible alternates, and one thing we, we learned from listening to the staff is, you know, having an additional theater classroom would help them out with their programming and their scheduling. So that is sort of an ideal alternate that we'll design and what we could solicit bids for, so that the district will have better numbers on what that costs, and then they can make more informed decisions on whether or not we could get that theater classroom.
Yes.
With the current design, the band room, which is where it says possible alternate, now no longer has exterior, an exterior door. And I could see there being a possible problem with that, especially because a lot of times, I know especially marching band, and there's a lot of times where you need to be able to move the people inside and outside the school, load things from outside the school from the inside, and is there going to be ample space in that corridor so that there can be large objects moved through there, or will there be an attempt to try to make an exterior exit for those functions?
Yeah, I think we'll size this corridor large enough for the band coming in and out. And there's things we do, like allow maybe wider doors in and out of that space for, for equipment, and sometimes we, you know, like those doors are, you could open them and not have any kind of center mullion or center bar that prohibits instruments for coming in.
Okay.
But if you can imagine, this is that door you mentioned right there, coming out here, having a wide enough corridor directly to the outside.
Yeah, especially in terms of turning things tends to be a problem, so having enough space in that, one thing to move objects.
Right.
You'll also have the whole scene shop opens with the garage door.
Oh, wow, okay.
To the outside.
Yeah, but that tends to be more dangerous, like people don't go in the scene shop because of the potential hazards.
There's just, you know, there's a lot more, there's a lot of potential there.
Okay.
Right. Yeah, we'll, we'll have control over how wide that corridor ends up being.
So the width of the, the width of the auditorium, just to be clear, too, is it's, it's consuming the existing auditorium in the, in the little theater.
In the little theater, right.
I understand, and it's getting, getting wider than what's there, too.
So we'll move up to, to the second floor, and here you get a better picture of that seating underneath the balcony, how you could actually step up these risers and then exit out, and you'll be on, on the second floor. That's where we'll house the control room, it'd be an enclosed room for control and projection into the auditorium, and then also finding ample space for costume and prop storage on the second floor between the stage and, and the black box. These large Xs kind of just indicate that those are tall volume spaces, so we want the theater and the stage to be high volume, and that's what you're seeing there. And then on the third floor, this is where the entire balcony actually discharges onto the third floor. So there's a main cross aisle going across the balcony. You could walk down and sit in the first two rows, or you could walk back and sit in the, the remaining of the balcony. And you'll walk down and out, and you'll exit onto the third floor. And here, we're sort of trying to create more, more space in the corridor so that when you have 400 people leaving a balcony, you're not just emptying out onto a hallway, but you're coming out into more of a, a space that's suitable for what we call pre-function or just places for people to gather before or after an event. And then because we have that number of people on the balcony, we're also creating more bathrooms on the third floor, too. So what we did here is, if you can imagine, we're going to slice the building in half and sort of look at the, the auditorium and the stage from the side, and, and you can get an idea of how the different functions align up with your existing floors. So this is the first floor, the second floor, the third floor. You also get an idea of how much taller this auditorium and the fly tower will be compared to the existing auditorium. And that was really driven by making sure that we could fit the 1,200 seats in there, but also have adequate sightlines down to the stage. And here's sort of a different perspective. So this is just a sketch of the existing entry into the cafeteria, and just for a massing study of how big the, the auditorium will be. So that's about the size of the fly tower in the auditorium behind, so it'll, it'll have a presence.
It's going to be big.
That's another great opportunity to change how South looks, right? From all sides. One of the things that we hear commonly, as you all know from our students, is that they don't particularly like the appearance of their school. So this gives us a, a pretty big structure to start changing that.
Looks like we could put a hologram on there.
A mural.
Or a.
A place to do that movie night that they do.
Yeah, yeah. Or our electronic sign.
Oh, boy.
Don't write that down.
So Amy's going to talk about our meeting with the village and zoning.
Oh, that was, yeah.
So, so one thing we will be having actually tomorrow, I'm meeting with the village as a preliminary meeting to discuss kind of the process.
The sign?
No. Sorry. Not the sign, but the project in general as holistically and how it fits within the village ordinance, and to get that through planning and zoning. So we'll start those conversations with them, fully transparent, talking about the auditorium, showing them some of these images as we start that process.
With looking at the downtown area, I do not see a problem with the sign, but that's my opinion.
We'll work through any, any conversation points that they might have, and I'll bring it back to the district.
Well, the higher part of this, too, is the fly tower.
Right.
And that's really ideal, what we want to have.
Yeah.
Right.
We can have a helicopter lab.
That's, but that's an important factor in what's driving the height of this as well.
Right.
What's happening with the fly tower.
Yeah.
So we're going to keep moving around the commons and end on the, on the new, the new foods lab here. So this, this is where you actually have existing art rooms, but this is where the new food labs are going to be displaced in order to provide the new learning commons. And what you see here are actually two different layouts of the room, and that's because we're actually still meeting with the staff and working with the staff on what the ideal layout is and what works for them. But the concepts are similar, and that is kind of getting shared workstations for students to, to work on, but also providing flexibility in the room. So that could be done with movable tables, that could be what we call ponied up to a culinary station, or it could be moved in the center of the room for a different configuration. And then each kind of having sort of a centralized, interactive teacher demo station where students could actually come and sit at the teacher demo station and have the right technology and infrastructure for, for curriculum and teaching. And the other feature is sort of the shared demonstration kitchen, and we had a lot of conversation about sort of the right mix of providing students with the opportunity of having. the opportunity of having some light commercial instruction on more commercial equipment. And so, having this sort of seven station between the two rooms give them an opportunity to, it's a bad pun, but to get a taste of sort of working in that kind of environment. The second thing it does, it's one of those hardworking spaces, so it could be one of those spaces that when outside of class could be used for events that are happening in the commons. And it could be student run, it could be PTO run or teacher run too. And then, here's the sort of a sampling of images that we're using to share with the staff too. We find the images go a long way there too, but the idea of movable tables that could be combined into sort of this center farm table idea. The idea of not just having individual stations where only one group of students is working, but shared stations. And the idea of sort of open shelf storage, just one thing we heard from the staff is not things behind closed doors that might be dirty or wet, but keeping things open and accessible for the students.
What's the bottom, is that the existing?
No.
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 Down there, no.
Okay, okay, I retract my question.
So, one thing I wanna mention, as Steve alluded to, we're still working with the design teams to figure out the organization and making sure all the pieces and parts. So, what you'll see throughout the entire presentation today is identifications of like furniture locations. Those are just for scale. We still have to work through all the details of what goes where and what types of pieces are actually in the spaces, but just to give a sense of scale for everyone.
Otherwise, you're just looking at an empty box and it's hard to judge kind of what could fall in it. But, yeah, we still are going back to design teams to figure out what actually happens in each of these spaces.
Yeah, one of us, I think the culinary suite meeting this week.
Yeah, we have a whole bunch over the next month here, so.
Next Wednesday.
So, we're sort of continuing, walking around the commons. We're gonna end in that northeast addition that Dr. Thiele pointed out, and this is gonna house sort of the fine art suite. So, all these rooms get displaced.
Real quick, so the purple, just to give you guys a point of reference, that's the corner of the culinary arts area. So, that kinda shows you how the two spaces flow into each other.
Right.
Sorry to cut you off.
No, that's fine. So, the four art rooms get displaced into this new addition, and there's opportunity then to really think how art is delivered and how art works together. We had a lot of good conversations with the staff. You know, the term sense of community was used a lot between the art programs. So, the idea of not looking at these rooms as four individual art rooms, but how they could relate to each other in terms of a suite of rooms. So, you see in some cases, rooms could actually open up onto one another for some opportunity between the two. There's also a lot of things we see about students being able to see what other students are working on and the synergy that comes with that too. But the idea is a ceramic studio and a jewelry slash 2D studio. So, that's one of those hardworking spaces too, where jewelry can happen, but also some 2D art. A shared digital lab between the two 2D studios. Again, one of those kind of efficiencies of spaces. And then, the last studio at the end there too. And we're kinda looking at this as a continuation of the commons, but as an ideal place to start displaying art and making it an art gallery of student work. And then, it just so happens that it's directly across from the existing photography room, which is part of that program as well. And then, this shows some of the ideas that we're talking with the design teams about, but connection to the outdoors, which is a great opportunity here too for outdoor instruction as well. But the idea of how art can open up from studio to studio, and you have a visual connection, but also a physical connection from room to room.
This addition also...
This addition will also serve as kind of that beacon for the community. It's gonna be visible from 63rd, it's on that corner of 63rd and Dunham. So, that's gonna be a nice opportunity for this addition as well.
So, if you can visualize going down 63rd Street where you can't tell if it's a school or a warehouse right now, instead, as you move from west to east, you're gonna come across the auditorium, which will obviously stand out and will be designed to be visually pleasing as you come up 63rd. And then, when you arrive at the corner, you're going to see this new curved addition that will definitely soften the look of the building. But, you know, we haven't worked on the outside, but the architects understand that the intent here is to really make this a focal point of the community, just as when you come down Main Street and you come by North High, it's impressive as you come by it. You're less than impressed right now as you go by South High. We want a similar type of, you're entering into the south gateway of our community, and that this should recognize that and reflect that.
And the sign won't interfere with that either.
Exactly.
Yes.
I know that you haven't touched on outdoor quite yet, but as you say, outdoor pottery and outdoor art instruction, is there like any sort of plans or idea to create like a patio almost for that sort of thing?
Yeah, that's exactly what we imagine when we say outdoor instruction, but some paved areas that these rooms could directly exit out onto and do some instruction. And the same thing with the pottery and the rack, who's kind of having some paved area and having the right equipment out there as well.
Okay.
So, I want it to just be grass out there, but some hardscape that you could actually set up on. And then, what we did is, did now is we shifted to the second floor. So, this is directly above the art suite on the first floor. This is that second floor that is priority number one for South in terms of making sure it aligns with the budget. But, this gives the ample opportunity to get additional classroom space in here. And of that classroom, also getting some new STEM spaces in there as well, science and STEM spaces. But the same idea applies that starting to look at the synergy between rooms that could actually open up to one another. And then, also the idea of education not just happening within the four walls of the classroom, but opportunities to use the corridors and the hallways for additional educational purposes.
Yeah, you could open up the ceiling and also have things to look up into the sky in observatory.
Well, and where you see open to below there, that's actually the outside of the building, because the line that's below that is the current wall. So, the idea is that there's light that's allowed to come in from above to make sure that those classrooms aren't now dark all the time, they're actually still getting light from the outside.
Right.
And in a typical non-elective science classroom, what's the enrollment? Like, what's the head count typically?
24 to 28 typically.
Are you pushing more the 28, or are you trying to keep them more at the 24?
Depends on the class, depends on the demand.
The lab area, if you're gonna push the 28 head count, you have to make sure you have the space then for the 28 versus the 24.
And those are both set up differently to show the possibilities of different ways to configure the labs too.
Yeah. And then, what would that be, your science storeroom then in the middle?
Yeah, or a prep room for those two rooms, you know, for supplies.
There's a lot of conversation about student project storage, that students work on projects beyond the 40 or 50 minutes of a class period, so they need places to house projects. So, we're having that in our thinking kind of built into the rooms too. And then, again, the two different layouts are showing, you know, the idea is that all types of science could be delivered in these rooms. So, with using flexible furniture, you could set it up for a lecture situation, or you can move these tables along the perimeter and you can be set up for a lab situation, but making sure we have the infrastructure in place for all the different science curriculum.
Both the science labs are, you were keying in on the, you're showing 24 there, so...
They will all be designed to hold 28.
Right.
Yes.
Otherwise, you have 24 in the classroom, then you go into, in the lab or the experiment, where's the other four kids gonna stand?
Right, right.
Instead of groups of two, now you got groups of three or four, and that's just not productive.
Yeah, and remember, we wanna have the most flexibility possible. So, as Steve was saying, we're designing the labs so that they're not single curricular use, so that you could teach biology, chemistry, or physics in these spaces, and that they can hold up to 28 so that they don't limit us in our scheduling, in the flexibility of our scheduling.
Yeah, and there's nothing been planned inside the room other than the perimeter walls. And then, those are in there to give scale. Some of the schools we visited, they had kids roll their table up to the teacher portion of a demo table as that additional one, and so there's... But we haven't even talked about those details.
I guess I wondered like...
Those spaces are...
Yeah, I was just wondering, like, when you do, when you start scheduling, what is your like, do you try to keep a hard 24? That's one, hard 24, do you kind of bubble 24 and then maybe push 26, or is it like...
We always set up ideal and max. And 28 is always the max.
My only question, with the non-elective.
Right.
So, because of chemistry, are we gonna, are we gonna have, are the labs gonna all be vented, or?
Yeah. We'll provide for those means. And then, we're gonna kinda end on the common space too. So, all those spaces we just walked through kinda circulate around the commons area. But, we talk about South in terms of making connections, and we're using the commons to do that. So, students are better connected to the resources available to them. So, the shaping of the commons really drives from the idea of connecting students to the library, to student services, to dining, to the event spaces, to the culinary program, and then ending on the fine arts. And then, having sort of a series of small group rooms along the way. That was sort of one of the things we heard from both the students and the staff, more meeting spaces, more small group rooms. So, here you see some that are tucked under that stair that Dr. Thiele referred to, and then we're kind of carving out areas throughout the commons. So, as you walk throughout the commons, there's gonna be a multitude of different sized small group rooms that can be used. We're currently showing some seating outside, and that is part of the development of sort of the outdoor spaces, but having some paved area in the courtyard and some landscaping in the courtyard. And we're still looking at what that might look like, but identifying that as a key instructional space and a useful space too. The furniture you see here, again, is just for scale purposes. We're sort of test fitting to make sure that the full period lunch and resource center could fit in there too. So, these numbers are just kind of schematic test fits to make sure that that works. But, the idea about the furniture and then the seating is really making use of every square footage and making it available for students. So, whether it be a table for one, a counter along the wall, a little nook under the stairs, but really providing some student choice so that he could either meet in groups, they can meet and work individually, or they could even have large group instruction out here as well.
So, with all of these, this is more of an ad version question, with all of these spaces with the loft space and the nooks and that, are we, from a security perspective and a supervision perspective, how are we gonna manage all that space?
Well, the great, the great advantage that the commons gives us with pulling all the study halls back in is that right now, all of the staff that we have that are in disparate places around the building, all get pulled back to the center of the building as well. So, and in these spaces, we've designed them intentionally, we've gone and actually stood in them to make sure that we could visualize the sightlines. And what you'll notice is, you could put a support staff member in each corner, and from there, you can see everything that's happening across that space. And in both schools, you have the entire administrative team right next to the commons. So, they're a great concentration of adults right next to the commons should we need any additional help for any reason right there.
So, we won't have to look at increasing our staff numbers to compensate for the...
I don't believe so.
On the security standpoint and just, you know, in terms of just general function, thinking of outdoor seating in that commons area for the dining, it's so much better than what we currently are doing. You know, right on the parking lot.
We've stopped letting them use it because of that.
Yeah, right? So, this now is...
Because it's really not enclosed, it's...
Yeah, so this is something that is enclosed, and I see the kids on a nice day.
And with the...
Just as an extension of the commons.
With the glass, the challenge right now, South has with the commons is you can't see it to supervise it.
Yeah.
But now, you'll be able to.
And you can see it from above too, second floor, third floor.
Yeah.
It's really gonna be pretty, it's nice.
Okay, we're gonna keep, so these are just, again, some more images to help visualize other than looking at a floor plan. But Dr. Thiele mentioned sort of that stair that takes you up from the commons to the second floor and the third floor. But, we're thinking about that as more than just a stair that gets you up from different floors, but it's another opportunity for student space. So, whether it be using the landings as more collaborative space for students, or even at the base of the stairs, building in some built-in seating with power, with charging, so students can be kind of using all aspects of that. And when I pointed out those small group rooms underneath the stair, here's some pressing images that could visualize, even the space underneath the stairs is valuable real estate and can be used for small group rooms.
Steve, before you go on, I want everybody to just look and remember for later, the top middle image, those stairs like that, where you have this collaboration stair, that's gonna come back later when we talk about north. But just remember that when I talk about it later.
And then, the study loft too. So, that's a key feature too, so we're not just using the main floor of the commons, but we're really activating all floors of the commons too. So, you can see how these study lofts too are highly visible. You could stand on the ground floor and be able to see up onto the lofts, whether it be glass walls or glass railings. But, it's another collaborative space that students and staff can use throughout the day, and it's directly adjacent to the commons with stairs down into it. And again, the idea of connections, and that's really the curve that you see was really the driving factor for that. But, we talked about security in those small group rooms, but, you know, utilizing transparency and glass so that students are acoustically separated and then they can work in a small group, but you have supervision into the rooms. Even thinking about, if you think about that curve's a large glass wall, but building in seating with power that students could sit along the glass, look out into the courtyard, that's one of those choices to have in terms of where they can sit and how they can work. And then, here's just connecting those to sort of the design of South. So, this is sort of a, it's a bird's eye view of South, it's sort of like a dollhouse view. So, there's the main entry there, Norfolk is kinda running along the bottom of the screen. So, that stair that can take you up to the second and third floor, which is gonna be a predominant feature of the commons, but again, making it more useful than just a stair that takes you up to different floors. Likewise, those study lofts are gonna be another key feature. It's a way of kinda activating each floor. You could have sightlines down into the commons, but you could also kind of have views from the commons up into these study lofts.
I know we're doing test classrooms right now, but are there plans to do like test collaboration spaces and see how people react to different furniture and things as you start to put together this whole commons idea and how you're gonna furnish it?
It's a great idea, that's one we haven't discussed yet as a team yet there too, but there are possibilities, much like we're doing with the furniture in the classrooms, that we, there's different furniture that's more soft seating oriented that we could test out too. That's something we'll need to talk with the district and the administration with.
The other thing we did Kirk is, when we went to the different schools over the summer, we've taken hundreds of pictures of things they've done and not done. And so, we've gotten ideas from that. A lot of it is about furniture and how it's set up.
Yeah, okay.
And all of the collaboration spaces will be wheelchair accessible?
Yes, accessibility is, you know, it was one of the top goals of all of this. So, actually, our student oversight teams have been excellent at looking out for their fellow students and making sure that areas are accessible.
We have a student who's in a wheelchair that's on our student team.
Oh, good, oh, good, good, good.
I think there's one, oh, no, that was the last one for South. Any more questions or, yes?
How loud will the learning commons be?
Hard to say exactly, but it is gonna be a more active space than what we would traditionally think of as a quiet library. And part of that is because of the full period lunch and resource center. There are things we're looking at architecturally, we have an acoustician on board, so we're gonna be looking at how we treat the walls, how we treat the ceilings to help sound in the commons too.
And Don, one of the things that we currently have challenges is that our library has to serve all of those purposes, the loud and the quiet spaces. Where you can see, especially at South, you'll start to see a blur between where the library and the commons happens. We've even started talking to the librarians about extending some of their services out into the commons area so that, you know, the invitation into the library starts out here. But now, it allows us to carve out some of the lower volume spaces height-wise for more quieter spaces and activate, you know, more louder spaces out here. Although, you know, those will be carved out, smaller spaces, the study lofts. We wanna give people the whole variety where they could talk at full voice, all the way down to one-on-one conversations.
Very exciting, very exciting.
All right, now we're gonna trade out Ed for Janice and move over to North. Did you just say trade up?
I did. I get enough grief from him every once in a while, I have to give it back.
I just have one more question, and it might be too early, but in terms of like, are we talking about, you know, for energy consumption, things like solar and...
Solar isn't necessarily part of this, but that's something that we're looking at outside of this. But definitely, we are looking at every possible way of looking at energy efficiencies and building that in. It's funny, this is a running joke amongst us and the architecture team that a lot of times people ask us about building green, and that's, like, everything that we do, we're looking at ways to be energy efficient, things even as simple as LED lighting, or how ventilation works, or controls on ventilation. Everything that we do is looking at trying to make the building as efficient as possible.
Thank you.
All right, so moving over to North High, you're gonna see a little different feel. As we all know, North is real tight, right? Very landlocked, and even how we're gonna discuss the plan is a little different, where when we... And even how we're going to discuss the plan is a little different, where when we talked about South, we could kind of talk about this flow through the building. North is a little more disjointed because of how we have to focus on aspects and chunks of the building because of how vertical North is. This is what we talked about the last time, you know, bleachers, I didn't mention again, but bleacher squad rooms at both schools, the turf field at South, right? So those site plans. But then, you know, the ideas of the additions and taking over the courtyards. Okay, the flow currently at North, really, to put up this slide, the majority of the changes that are going to happen at North are from this point down, okay? It's really, the south half of the building is what's really being impacted through these changes, plus the secured vestibules on each side of the building. But really, we're going to be focusing on this chunk of the building here in the changes, which is appropriately the oldest part of the building. One of the key design aspects that the architects uncovered and are uncovering is to point out the fact that the original 1928 school, the original building for District 99 still exists inside of North High. There's hallways in certain spots, and new walls, and paint, and floors that have hidden that original building, but it still exists. And part of the design principles that they're putting into North here is to expose and make accessible as many of those original walls as possible, and make it so that you can really walk around, really, at least two of the sides of the original building from inside. And if you include the outside, you can get around three sides of the original 1928 building and walk around it and feel that original building that's now sitting inside of the sprawling North High. Well, somewhat sprawling. All right, so I'm going to do the general overview, and then I'll once again turn it over to Amy and Steve. So I'm going to start over in this corner, and this is where they're going to start as well. So we're going to start on the west side of the building and work our way east. This is the Prince Street Circle, right? And this is the white gym that's currently there. This becomes the new building services corner of the building, where the loading dock gets relocated from here over to this side of the building. They'll dig in and explain how all this works in a second with a new drive that comes into here. Part of the white gym gets, the chunk gets taken out for a new radio/TV studio, which is currently on this side of the hallway. Doing so allows us to make this hallway go all the way out and make it accessible so that students can exit out there in the case of an emergency. Where the current radio/TV is becomes kind of our low-incidence, multi-needs classroom, and gets an accessible washroom in there as well. One of the things that we're sorely in need of at North High. As we move down the hall towards the cafeteria, you'll run into the new kitchen. Remember, the kitchen is currently here. It actually moves over here. I might steal a little bit of your thunder, but it moves over here because of its accessibility to building services. So deliveries, trash removal, everything that you need that comes in and out of the kitchen can actually happen through these back corridors, whereas right now, it has to come out into the hallways. All the deliveries, all the trash removal actually have to cross hallways to get to the kitchen. With the serving right on the other side of it attached, Amy and Steve will dig into how this area functions. But then, right outside of the serving area is all of the new cafeteria space, which then connects over to the commons. I'll get there in a second. But right above this is the new gym addition, which when we get to the second floor, I'll really drill into how that works. So as we move this way, you get into the dining area. And inside the dining area is the new culinary arts lab. Down here, we continue remodeling some current classrooms and the faculty cafeteria to be some more special education space, multi-needs here. As we move across the cafeteria, we get into the commons. This is where that current courtyard is. One of the challenges that the architects, Amy and Steve will talk about here in a second, if you've been inside of North High, you start to realize there's a series of ramps and elevation changes, and it's quite a challenge at North. But what they're doing, remember when I said, remember those stairs? When you saw those collaboration stairs? Because this is at a higher elevation here, this pink color than the yellow color, between the pink and the yellow will actually be a set of collaboration stairs where students can work, can plug in their devices, can collaborate. Across those edges in that change in elevation will be a combination of spots where individual kids can work, groups can work, you know, a whole different type of seating and arrangement to make that elevation work. And they'll show you in a second how the ramps and everything else function so students can make it between. One of the great challenges is, it's not just one elevation change, right? It's two.
No, it's two.
So from here to here is one elevation change, and then from here to here is another elevation change. So they've got it all worked out so our students can seamlessly move between those without the use of lifts that we have to currently use to get between those spaces. Coming this way, we enter into the commons, which is that current courtyard. Up here, this is, so current auditorium, current main hallway, this is a set of classrooms. This becomes college and career center, student activities, bookstore. We move the nurse from this side of the building up here, same idea and concept as South High. You get security and the nurse's office in close proximity to the main entrance. We do some light remodeling here in student services, serving the same purposes we talked about at South High. Reception area, a way to get in kind of indiscreetly, to get into the services that you need, hanging right off of the commons. It also allows them to pull some offices that are around the building into the administrative suite. Then down here is this 1955 edition, what I call the sore thumb of North High. This is that ugly south corner. And Amy and Steve are going to dig in real deep into the changes that are happening over in this corner of the building, including this current wall that is very ugly and old and falling and rusting out, will be exchanged for a brand-new wall here as well. So they'll talk a little bit about that. So that's the first floor. Any questions? Yeah?
So, and maybe you're going to talk about the loading dock in a little bit?
They will dig in specifics in the loading dock.
Okay. Because Mike, we had a lot of feedback from our neighbors about the loading dock.
You'll see that when they go into the zoomed in. So I won't steal their thunder on that, but it's coming.
Just one of the things that I'm not sure that you'll talk about, since it's not at the south end, is we are gaining a community room next to the alumni room. So that would be nice, because we'll have an additional meeting space.
So they're going to, thank you, Janice. So this is a computer lab that actually gets folded into the suite down here. They'll talk about that in a second. But yeah, one of the changes that happens on this side of the building is that computer lab gets remodeled into a community room. So South High has the brand-new one off of their commons. This is, if you, you know, in North High, you walk through a big waiting area here. You can get to the alumni room and the community room then for a variety of different meetings that are there. Anything else, Janice, on that first floor that jumped out? And like I said, this, they're going to dig in in depth. That's its own standalone conversation in a second. Moving up to the second floor, above the TV and radio studio, we gain two classrooms. We remodeled two more on the other side of the hall. As we move back down the hallway here, we end up above the kitchen and serving area is one of the athletic lofts. Remember, we have to replace the white gym athletic space and all the services that were occurring in there, plus give North additional athletic and PE space because they're so landlocked. So in doing so, we've added the gym, and this goes up with high volume above it. But in the spaces above the kitchen serving area and the part of the cafeteria area, we actually open up a large loft area for gymnastics, wrestling, dance, those kinds of activities, getting them actually more athletic and PE space than what they currently have with just the white gym. One of the key aspects you'll see here on the second floor, if you remember, we talked about opening up the 1928 building so that you could see it. You'll see along the athletic loft, and I'm sure they'll talk about some of the design in here, but this all becomes open and opens up this original wall here so that what's sitting right now in the building services, you can't see that original wall. It's actually inside of CMG offices. Now you'll actually be able to walk around the cafeteria and see that original building all the way up and out. So you'll be able to stand right alongside that original building on this side or on the other side in the commons.
Cool.
So you'll be able to feel that history that North High has. Up on the second floor, remodel and refresh of the learning resource center, that's at both schools, will be freshening up the libraries, some additional classroom space. And then they'll dig in in a second in my favorite corner of North High. So this stacks three stories in this bottom southeast corner. Going up to the third floor, oh, any questions on the second? All right, going up to the third floor, some classroom remodels and refreshes. Like, this is right now a large study hall that gets broken into three individual classrooms because study halls change, right? Because of the commons. And then some remodeling here, they'll dig into this in that corner for our science labs. All right, so how are we doing? Nobody's fallen asleep yet, so we're doing okay. All right, so I'm going to turn this back over to Steve and Amy. We're going to go back here just so that they can give you a reference of where we're going to dig in next.
So we're going to work sort of from the west to the east, or we're going to take a closer look and zoom in on the loading dock in the CMG location. So this is in a large view of that, and we'll start with the indoor space, but providing ample open receiving area for the staff there, too. Secured storage was another key part of that, and also having office spaces that are a little bit more buffered from the open dock doors that you might have in the receiving area because they're separated with staff restrooms and a break room in the middle. And then if you look at the outside, this is the existing north entry of the white gym, really creating an enclosed, and by enclosed, I mean separated by screen walls, loading and trash area. And that's sized currently so that a semi truck, a really large truck, could back up to this dock here, and there'll be an open bay door to receive and load. It's also sized so that when there's more than one truck, and you have a small box truck, a FedEx truck or a UPS truck, they could also back into this kind of screened-in loading area. This is a large gate that could be opened and closed, too, for secure reasons. And then outside of that, that screen wall, we're introducing some new landscaping along Prince Street. So it's currently actually concrete from the street to the sidewalk. We're actually introducing the idea of a new parkway, so there's grass and trees between the sidewalk and the street. And then in addition to that, a landscape bed between the sidewalk, and it's going to be the screen wall from the loading area. We're still looking at what that wall is, but we're going to be looking at it from an aesthetic standpoint, but also from a sound standpoint. What materials can we use to help kind of muffle the sound from the loading and trash area to Prince Street?
What's the height of that wall? Ballpark?
I would say by the time you need to load here, this is going to be like an elevated platform for trucks to back into. We want to at least block anyone standing on that and receiving that, so 10 to 12 feet, maybe ballpark right now. Couple other functions that are going on here is some trash collections and the trash bin. But we're looking at two bay doors, one primarily for receiving, the other for trash collection, which is where the compactor would be.
Just to elaborate on that a little bit, though, you think of that wall, that wall could look like the exterior of a building.
Concrete wall.
You know, as opposed to a, just a, you know...
A metal wire.
Right. Just aesthetically, the opportunity here on Prince Street is really...
I'm thinking, he said they haven't thought the materials because that would affect sound, that a truck while it sits there idling, too.
Sure.
So it needs to add a little mass to it, probably, so...
You know, if the semi truck's sitting there idling for three hours.
Yeah, we don't want that.
You know, one material we're going to likely look at is the idea of masonry, a brick that matches the building, maybe in some of the same brick detailing that could happen on that wall, so it really blends in with the building there, too.
And then the landscaping in front of it, the landscaping in front of it, it just vastly improved from what you're looking at right now.
Right.
Well, that is by far our ugliest corner of the building, so...
So in addition to sort of the screened-in loading area, we're looking at sort of a new design for the Prince Street entrance. And that is really going to be designed to really separate student traffic, so we're going to be looking at an ornamental fence here that continues up north with a gate so that vehicular traffic and truck traffic is completely separated from the students coming in and out of the building. And then we envision this kind of heavily landscaped, some pavers, even some more outdoor seating for students to use as they enter the school.
One of the things I think is fun about this, too, is that entry to the white gym, you know, right now, it's just kind of, it's kind of there, right? You know, and so this is a chance to restore that to kind of its original glory in a way as well.
What Mike's alluding to is that that becomes the entrance, actually, for the new gymnasium.
People are really, really using it.
Right, for what it was designed for.
Yeah.
This entry and the event entry is one we kind of want to frame and capture in this new plaza for students.
Another, another kind of unique thing that happened, as you recall, we're infilling your current courtyard over at North to create the learning commons. But because of those screen walls that kind of go around the loading dock, you kind of create a pseudo courtyard for the students to be out there, but still not be necessarily visible out to the public street.
Any other questions on sort of the loading dock and Prince Plaza? And then we're going to move to the commons, because this is really sort of the connection to all the other functions. So what we just saw on the last slide, Dr. Thiefer mentioned sort of how loading is appropriately located to the kitchen, which will then serve the servery. And then that's what you're seeing kind of along this kind of dark salmon color there, too. So that servery opens up onto the common. So you can make out here what is that existing footprint of the 1928 building, and that's something we're trying to showcase, and really it's something that the commons kind of completely centers around. But like South High, we talk about connections to the commons, so we made sure certain functions were kind of directly adjacent to the commons for student resource and student access. Student support services, ideas like the bookstore, student activities, the college career center. We'll talk about culinary arts in a few minutes, access to activities, and then access to food service. And what's unique about North, because of its density and how landlocked it is, is that you'll have access from these stairs directly down to resource, and then you could take these stairs up to the library, too.
I like how you previously, in some of the groups that I was part of, you described that as kind of a main street, too, right?
Right, yeah.
And I thought that that was a nice image visually.
Right. We have some additional images to share that kind of continue that analogy about this being more of an urban kind of main street. Again, the furniture here is just for reference. You know, one thing we heard from the staff is, how can we make this commons more hardworking and more flexible? So we're starting to look at how areas can be zoned off and either opened up or closed off by the use of movable walls. So if you can imagine this complete, this wall kind of completely folds open, so this space could be open to the cafeteria during the day, but then closed during the evening for a specific group function or activity. Likewise, this space right here is actually faculty dining, so that's kind of a place where the faculty can be used, and that is outside the count that you see here for student use. And here you see the separation of colors, and you get a better idea of sort of that built-in seating with lots of power, different types of seedings, built-in tables, built-in benches, that really helps kind of cover that change from zero level to two feet up, but making that more purposeful by building and seating for students along the way. And here are the two main ramps in this corner and that corner to help navigate that elevation change.
So students get their food over in that salmon-colored area?
By the 16.
By 16.
Right.
And then they walk down the hall, and then through the doors by 194 to sit down to eat?
Or back... Or back through this way into the Commons area.
Okay. All right. We'll show you some images.
That's kind of a long way to go when they've only got 20 minutes to eat.
It's the same way, actually, at South right now, right? You walk all the way through the cafeteria to the back of it to serve, and then you come back out to where you're going to see. And with now having 50 minutes for a lunch period, it's far more manageable.
Is it going to be 50 minutes?
Right, so you have 50 minutes for lunch and...
Oh, not 20.
Resource, right. Because lunch and resource get combined into that full 50-minute period.
Sorry, I didn't...
No, no.
We end up with three lunch periods at each school.
Yeah. Rather than six?
Yeah. That's what, you know, that goes back to what Ellie's comments were earlier tonight, the idea that then a teacher, a student has options of how they slice and dice up that 50 minutes, where a student might choose to go see a counselor, then go get their food, then go do some studying, you know, and then the next day they might go right in and get food right away, and then go to a practice room for the rest of the class period. You know, there's going to be some student choice and ownership over how that time is now structured, rather than us structuring it for them.
That was a good point, the same that came up with our kitchen design team, is about how that surge of people looks when you're going from a 20-minute period to a 50-minute period. You have a little bit more relief in that case.
Steve, while we're here, can you point out the elevator as well, so that the, because we talked about going between the levels vertically, the library above it, resource below it, but...
This here is a new elevator, and if you go back, right here along this east-west corridor is another new elevator, too. So two new elevators that will help you take you to the different floors.
I have a quick question. So right now, North, with our cafeteria, students have access to outdoor eating option, and like I know the courtyard, or the pseudo courtyard you referred to, has like picnic tables in it. Will there be like an opportunity, maybe that's not a question for the architect, but will there be an opportunity for kids to still take their lunch outside and eat, or no? Not as much?
We haven't, I don't think we've talked through that enough.
And we actually came up at our student meeting, and we have not talked through those details yet. I think one of the things that will be helpful is having the light, the natural light coming in, and so people will experience feeling like they're sitting outside without being outside, but that is something that we'll have to take a look at, because it's going to be a much further walk than it is currently.
Amy, are you going to have to change staffing for this, as far as monitoring, since you've got these kids all over this area? Are you going to have to have more staff?
Same thing that we talked about at South, the idea that all of our staff that are now isolated in study hall rooms and security that's all over the building now can come back and focus on that area of the building.
I guess, my question is like the logistics, how will I know if somebody's at study hall, somebody's at lunch, somebody's at resource? Where is it going to be?
You mean the student?
Free flow, yeah. How would you know if so-and-so went to lunch, maybe went to resource? Who's going to be kind of monitoring?
There won't be, there won't be. They'll be in those spaces, but where they're at in those spaces will be student choice.
That's kind of like you guys today, right?
To some extent, yeah, yeah. It's just right now, a lot of times they'll go to one of those spaces, and then they're kind of stuck on that island where now they can kind of flow between those spaces.
But they're going to be basically contained within that salmon color.
Yeah, correct. And between, at North, it's between the three floors, right, because you have the library on the top, or two, well, it is three floors. Library at the top, Commons in the middle, resource below.
Well, and the students can go into the yellow area, too, so they can eat lunch anywhere in that whole area.
Yep.
Except the library.
And then, well, I guess my other question then, if they're eating lunch there, would there be somebody to help monitor from just a mess or food?
We do now, yeah, we do now. Yep, absolutely. But we're, right now, a lot of those resources are scattered around the building. Now we can centralize them as we centralize the students as well. And as we mentioned before, at South, where all of your administrative resources, a lot of your adults in your building are in that administrative suite, that hangs right off the Commons as well. So if you should need to get more adults in that space, it would be there right there. That's where the brown is, yeah, yeah. That's the administrative suite.
Couple other quick features, we talked about small group rooms at South, same conversation at North, and that's what you're starting to see kind of show up here, is that giving opportunities for enclosed collaboration, too. You know, we think about sound in the space, and we're thinking about the furniture and the layout in terms of zoning the space, where you might have more active types, tables and chairs towards the servary, but here it's an opportunity to maybe put some more soft seating, some more quiet type of study spaces. So that's in our thinking about how this could be zoned in different ways using furniture. And we mentioned sort of images of the idea of Main Street and Marketplace, but because North is so dense and so landlocked, it really is analogous to, you know, what we call a very urban environment, too, where you have resources so closely connected and really where every square foot counts. So these are actually images, and if you think about it, between the South images and these, these aren't necessarily images of other schools, but we're looking at images of, from corporations and the business world, and from collegiate environments, too, and how they could apply to the Commons at North. But the idea of particularly in the three-story space, having a lot of natural light come from above down into the Commons, so we're not sacrificing daylight by infilling the courtyard there, but also sort of creating different screen materials, because a lot of that courtyard is a sore thumb that Dr. Thiele mentioned, that two-thirds of that is that 1955 addition. So we're thinking about ways of new materials we could put on that wall to give it a fresh look and a new face. And different ways, and here you can just kind of see different materials kind of come into play, but the idea of more screening elements and different views from the different spaces and functions that are happening on the second and third floor. And again, that's more applicable to sort of that three-story courtyard space. Then we also talked about the idea of, you know, what's in an urban environment, the idea of the Main Street or the market. And here you see images from, you know, actual storefronts where doors pivot open or doors rise up or even slide open and give access to students into those spaces. And that's a lot of our thinking about what happens along the Commons as students want to interact with the College and Career Center. And you'll see in a minute how they can interact with culinary and kind of see into that space or all the resources sort of around that. We kind of call them that, as you pointed out, sort of the Main Street of the Commons. And likewise, you know, the other thing you see in sort of urban environments is, you know, activating those in-between spaces. There's even precedence right here in downtown Downers about how alleyways are being activated for dining purposes and for collaboration spaces. So if you could kind of imagine that, servary, that Dr. Thiele was mentioning, is a three-story space where you allow the natural daylight coming in from above, and on one side, if you can imagine, it's the old 1928 facade, and the other side is your servary where students are getting food and entering the servary area. But we see that as a very exciting space and one that's going to be a showcase for the school. So moving around the Commons, we mentioned sort of the culinary lab, little different configuration from South, and that's just a nature of the different geometry and sort of the different structure that North has, but the same concepts apply, the idea of a highly flexible room where movable tables can be used even in conjunction with the cooking stations or separate to kind of create a more of a group work environment. A demonstration kitchen, which can be used for curriculum, but is also directly adjacent to, this is the Commons along here, so if you could think about that again as a support space for events in the Commons or for serving different functions that might happen there after school, that opportunity exists, too. So we're going to use this as another point of reference, so we started with the loading dock, we made our way to the Commons, we stopped at Culinary Arts. Now we're going to kind of end up on this corner of the building and take a deeper dive in there. So this is in part renovating the existing building as it is, but also adding on, so if you kind of follow my arm, I'm actually tracing what is the existing footprint of the building. So this renovation includes partial building addition to the west and a partial building addition to the east.
Steve, can you show the courtyard flows into that and where it opens up then?
Right. So here's the Learning Commons, and we intentionally sort of centered it so that it kind of aligns with the open space directly outside of the fine art suites, so you could go from the Learning Commons into sort of this fine art suite. And we really are looking at this as a suite of spaces, so rather than having a corridor or hallway with classrooms on both sides, really kind of building on the relationships of these different spaces, how they could build off of one another, and treating it like a suite of spaces. So we have ceramics kind of anchored in the corner, and that is to get access to the outside from our outdoor pottery, jewelry studio, which we're seeing being on display from the Common side. Again, a shared digital computer lab, this is the lab that was up near the main entry but relocates down here to create that community room, a photography studio and a 2D studio. And we heard from the staff, there's some synergy between those two programs, so the idea of a shared room that could be used for staging and setting photography shoots between 2D studio and photography. And again, ample storage sort of along the perimeter, kiln room, and this is just a piece of infrastructure that we need to replace. By building the Commons, we need to displace an electrical room, and so we're accounting for that in the planning as well. So we're going to move up to the second floor, and the same concept applies. Really, in this part of the wing, you have more project-based curriculum with art, CTE, and science. So the idea of a science or a suite of spaces is something that we're looking at. Again, the furniture is here for, as a placeholder, we're still working with the staff in terms of number of seats in a room, but the idea of an engineering lab, a fabrication lab, kind of being shared between two engineering labs. Here's a classroom, that's going to be one of those multi-function rooms. And then again, similar to, almost like a smaller Commons area, sort of a shared project area that could be used for spellout for child development or projects in the outside.
Gina, Project Lead the Way, is there any requirements that you have to have to host the class in the classroom? Is there any, like, you have to have these parameters of the classroom?
Structurally?
Yeah, or like...
I mean, we have certain needs and terms of...
Stuff you put in it, yes.
Like with IV, you have to, there's certain requirements with the IV program, the room has to have certain things, and I just wonder if Project Lead the Way had that, because this is where Project Lead the Way would be, right?
Yes.
Correct.
Not the current Project Lead the Way courses ever runs.
And this space is actually larger than what we currently have.
It looks bigger, yeah.
The other thing that I just wanted to point out is the Child Development Lab. Currently, we only use that three periods a day because only the childcare classes can be in there. And so in the redesign, they're designing it so that that classroom could be used all day. So when it's not being used for the childcare, it'll just be the class, which gives us, without adding necessarily more classrooms, five extra periods to schedule a day, which is great.
Could you have child care in the school?
No. Second floor. And then on the right are just some images of how that suite of spaces could apply to the CTE program. For those of you that attended the tour of New Trier, that's something we saw on other schools of how these programs kind of open up to one another and can really build off each other. And lastly, we'll move up to the third floor. Now, in this case, we're actually just renovating the existing building that's there, and those additions are actually partial stories, those are actually two-story additions. So that provides one of those opportunities for an alternate, in this case, this idea of instructional spaces on the roof of those one-story additions. And we're still working with the science staff on how applicable that is, but the idea of outdoor instruction for science could happen out here as well. But again, the same principle of having these multi-use labs where all sorts of science can happen in them by having the right infrastructure built in, but with flexible tables and seating. And again, you're showing, we're showing two different options, and that's because we're still in the phase that we're working with the staff on what options are appropriate for them.
I have one question. On the left side, the door's opening out, is that like similar to what the right side would be?
Yes, yeah. So on both these cases, these are rooftop spaces that, as an alternate, could be outfitted so students and teachers can actually go out onto the roof and use that.
But the instructional loft was a nice feature of this, too, that you didn't mention.
Right. Just like, you know, Project Lead the Way, or STEM, or Science, you know, we often, we've heard a lot of cases of science going out in the corridors and doing experiments and different projects out there, too. So that's really a multi-use kind of instructional space, too, not necessarily only dedicated to the science, but it's one of those sort of in-between spaces that can be used for all sorts of reasons. And again, just some images, you know, one of the things we're thinking about, really in all the programs, is kind of visibility in and sort of putting learning on display and balancing that with, you know, just security and confidentiality. Was it, any questions or comments on North?
Wow. And we can do, we can do all this within the budget?
There's the budget questions.
Right now, budget projections put everything you saw except for the second story at South, but we're planning that for the end of the project, because we should have contingencies and effective bidding and everything that makes that doable within budget there. And then we're also hoping to capture enough back through all of that to add that library, or library, a theater classroom at South, and to add the instructional space up on the third floor at North, so...
Are we touching the basement at North at all?
Just, we're just doing soft touch up of 050, the resource room. Yeah.
But to that point, what we are doing at North in the basement is we're allowing access through that new elevator to actually get you down to 050. So right now, there isn't current access.
Right now, there isn't current access down to that basement, other than a chairlift that kind of winds you around those old stairs.
Is 050 where the driver's ed courses?
No.
No?
It's where our study hall is, right now?
One of those rooms in the basement was, I mean, it was one of the rooms that we identified as a major problem in North. Are we touching it, or no?
Not as part of this, that would have to be... That would have to be additional through Capitol Outlay, that wasn't as part of the master facility plan.
And we've already done some upgrading in that room.
Okay. It's at North, it's south, I think the room you're referring to is at South, so...
Yeah, the driver's ed room is downstairs.
Okay, I got confused, okay.
Yeah.
But yeah, that's definitely some of our spaces through Capitol Outlay that need to be touched.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Terry, just, so maybe a placeholder, but the idea of a door from the instructional loft onto the outdoor instruction area on the other, on the west side?
Other side, other side. There, there.
Right there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
FYI.
You probably get there, but can't really do it.
Great idea.
All right, can we go to the next slide? All right, so we'd like to, at the end of all of these presentations, show you where we're going next. So up and coming, well, already started last week, was we're now meeting on a weekly basis our administrative team with the white designers. There's that much work to go through that we're constantly talking, and that's just our standing meetings. I think you guys have spent more time in our buildings and in your own offices over the last several months, so... Tonight, we're here at October 1st, which is the, you know, this first debut of all of this. We're going to work with a lot of the design teams over the next couple of weeks, leading up to October 17th, where we'll do a very similar presentation to what you saw tonight for the entire community. It'll be at North High at 7:00 PM. We'll go through both schools, just like we did tonight, and we'll walk through the whole thing and then take questions at the end. So the whole community is invited to that. On October 18th, the next day at noon, we're doing a Facebook Live event, where we'll do this again, live on Facebook, so that anybody that can't make it on the 17th can tune in and watch it on the 18th, or then, of course, it'll be archived on video, so people could watch it at any time after that. Now, it's important to realize that everything is preliminary right now. We have a lot of design teams, we have planning and zoning, we still have a lot of work right now, but we're really pleased with the direction that this is going in. Board members, if after tonight you have ideas, suggestions, I've sent you this presentation, it's up on board docs, so if you want to revisit it, and there was an area that stuck out to you or something that was like, oh, I really, I want to revisit that, feel free to, and then reach back out to me, and I'll take that back to the design teams. Your representatives have been Don and Mike. They have been, boy, putting in a ton of work on this project that we greatly appreciate, being, having two board members in the room to represent you there, and they've attended a lot of meetings as well. I think their offices are here lately, too. Next set, obviously, we start planning and zoning, that process starts tomorrow and then extends through the fall, and then we're hoping that winter-spring, we get into the bidding, and then the first phase of construction will begin next summer. Over the next few months, we'll be able to start telling you what will be in that first phase and how it will fall. We'll start getting into what looks, what inside of the walls look like, not just where the walls fall. So that's what's up and coming. So any final questions? So any final questions?
What time is the community open house?
7:00 PM at North in the auditorium. Maybe perhaps another milestone is, is our hiring of a construction manager, right? Right. We have our finalist interviews for construction manager tomorrow afternoon, and then from there, we'll figure out what comes next. I mean, just depends on how the presentations go tomorrow.
Mike, have you been sitting in those meetings?
Yep.
You have?
So has Don.
Okay, good. I didn't know, I didn't know both of you.
Yep. Yeah, they've sat in on them, they've seen all the proposals, the presentations, helped craft all the questions, so...
So we've been, we've been talking about this for quite a while.
No, we've, we've, we've done a lot of reading and, and asked a fair number of questions, and been an active, active participants in the, in the process, so it's really coming along well.
Good, thank you.
And... We'll know a lot more after tomorrow and in the coming weeks on that one. So I'll keep the board informed, as I have with just emails and, and that kind of information. Any other questions?
Just a general comment, I, I have to applaud White and all their efforts in this regard, and I, I, I'm so excited about presenting this to the community, and all of the modern designs and concepts that White has brought to the table is just absolutely fantastic. I think you've done an excellent job.
You're here.
Well, I will, I will add to it, our staff has, has done exemplary. I mean, we've had, I mean, two, 300, I mean, how many?
We have over 200 staff members that are, actually, Ed and I were commenting on this the other day, he had his staff meetings, and when he was, you know, they show off all the plans, I don't know how, Janice and I haven't had a chance to talk yet, but a lot of, a lot of staff members didn't come out for the staff presentations when asking them about it. They're like, oh, well, we already know about our spaces, because we talked to so-and-so who's on the design team, right? So many people are involved and have input that there's really been no surprises, really, amongst our staff, so... It's impressive, the, the amount of participation here and the, what's coming of all this. I mean, it's very thorough, I mean, this is, hopefully this is one of your best experiences. I, I, you know, I'm a little jealous. She's going to say yes. It's a... I mean, this is, this is really, it's really exciting, really exciting, but the way all these things are falling into place and are being shaped with great input from, from the staff and from our students, it really, I mean, it's helping to minimize those sort of, you know, next-day things where you go, I wish we had done this, I wish we had done that. I mean, I, I don't, I for one will not have any regrets when this whole process is done. It's not to say that this is going to be perfect, but it's going to be, it's going to be hard, hard to, to really pinpoint anything that we could have done more or different or more thoroughly. So this is, this is an extraordinary effort and a great representation of, of good stewardship of, of the taxpayers' dollars and their trust in, in what we're doing here, so, so well done all around.
Yeah. Thank you. And Don, we appreciate your comments, but as we try to start off every design team meeting, it's not White's design, it's really all of our designs, everyone that's been our participant in the conversations and making the spaces what they will ultimately become. Because at the end of the day, it is the, the students, the community, the, the staff's buildings, and you guys are going to be in those spaces for a long time.
It doesn't hurt that, what, about 30 staff members at White are either graduates or have kids in the 99 schools, or, so in some ways it is their schools as well, so...
Have a vested interest.
They do, they absolutely do. They, they literally can picture their children in the halls someday, so that's a nice added advantage, and to have two alum, two South alums on the design team is a nice thing to have as well. And we always looked through business at people that are, you know, with businesses that are in our district, right? And so, here we go, that's nice as well, the way this has worked out. Amy and Steve, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So exciting. Okay, this leads us to an opportunity for audience members to address the board on any topic pertaining to Community High School District 99. Does anybody wish to address the board? Hearing none, do we have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
You know what, I just want to say something before, you know, I don't know if you folks noticed, you all got one of these from South for the distinguished alumni. Take a look at it. Our alumni are phenomenal, and I'm sorry I didn't ask for North to send it, but if you could send them to...
We'll send it out to the board, yeah.
I went to both events, and, oh, gosh, so impressive and so wonderful. Both of you did such a great job at each school, we really appreciate it, and, you know, guys, these are, these are what we're here for, and so be proud of them.
Thank you for bringing that up.
And congratulations to both North and South for a successful homecoming. They were great. I could have asked for a little better weather at North, but...
That was a little rocky.
You know, you gotta take what you can get. But anyway, now we can ask for an adjournment.
Thank you for bringing that up, I'm glad that you did.
Thank you.
So moved.
So moved, Don, Mike, all those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed?